Ambassador Bond. Ambassador Bond?
It's okay, I lost my script anyway. There it is. Different one. Okay, welcome to the May 27, 2025 Regular Meeting of the Malibu City Council is now called to order. In-person participants, if you would like to speak, please submit your Request to Speak form to the clerk. Remote participants, if you wish, would like to speak, please join the Zoom webinar meeting, print it on the agenda, and raise your hand in Zoom when the item you wish to speak on is called. May we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Conrad?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember Euring?
Here.
Mayor Protam Silverstein?
Present.
Mayor Riggins?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Mr. Russo, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we please have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on May 16, 2025, with the amended agenda posted on May 23, 2025.
We may, maybe please have an approval of the agenda and consider hearing items 2A and 2B presentations before item number 5E.
I'll make a motion to move those two items before item 5E.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Is so ordered. So... At this time, we're going to do our ceremonial presentations. And... If Patrick Steele and Oscar Johnson will please meet me at the podium. Is he close?
How about doing Russo?
Do I need to? Yes.
I'd like to request to have a motion to reorder item 2B before item 2A.
I'll make a motion to do so.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Ordered. Okay. Mr. Spiegel, will you meet me at the podium?
Okay. All right. Okay. In the department, he was widely respected as a training officer. In our community, Mike was best known as the local homeless outreach coordinator. He approached his role with heart and humanity, balancing law enforcement with deep empathy. He treated every individual with dignity and worked tirelessly to connect those experiencing homelessness with housing and services, changing lives in the process. Deputy Trinan's courage was perhaps best exemplified in 2012, when he and Lieutenant Jim Royal rescued an 89-year-old woman from a burning home on Little Rock Way. That act of bravery was one of many that marked his career. Sadly, on April 6, 2021, we lost Deputy Trinan far too soon. In the days that followed, he was remembered as a true hero, a great man, and the heart and soul of the Sheriff's Department. That love and admiration were on full display on April 18, when hundreds gathered at Zuma Beach for a paddle out in his honor. Surfers, first responders, city officials, and community members came together to pay tribute, joined by lifeguard boats and a sheriff's helicopter, saluting one of Malibu's finest. Today, we honor what legacy, we honor that legacy by recognizing someone who embodies the same spirit of service, leadership, and quiet strength, Mr. Mark Russo. Mark and his family have called Malibu home since 2010. For the past 13 years, he has served as a VOP, a Volunteer on Patrol, and for 12 of those years, he has led the team as its team leader. The VOP program plays a critical role in our city, freeing up sworn deputies to focus on high-risk calls and handling traffic control, parking enforcement, and other essential non-hazardous duties. Under Mark's leadership, Malibu's VOP team has become an indispensable part of our public safety network. He is responsible for recruiting, training, and coordinating a team that is always ready to step up when the community needs them. Mark, Mark leads from the front. He has responded to countless vehicle collisions over the years, often providing vital traffic control at chaotic scenes. During the tragic 2023 incident that claimed the lives of four Pepperdine students, Mark and his team worked through the night and into the next day, maintaining road closures, preserving the crime scene, and supporting deputies during one of Malibu's darkest moments. Mark and his fellow VOPs are the Sheriff's Department eyes and ears on the ground. They extend the department's ability to respond, to protect, and to serve. Quite simply, they make Malibu safer. And so, it is with deep respect and gratitude that I present the first-ever Mike Trinan Award to a man who exemplifies what it means to serve with honor, humility, and heart, Mr. Mark Russo.
Very nice. Well, you know, what can I say? It's, Malibu has become such a home to all of us. And when we first moved up here, I was really impressed by the sense of community here. And I think that as residents, we all, you know, it's really incumbent on us to figure out ways that we can help out the community. And I was really kind of drawn to this program initially because of public safety. And I think that, you know, everybody, be it the SERC team, the VOP team, arson watch, you know, city council, you know, I think everybody is a community, needs to get involved. It just makes the city that much more resilient, that much better. I know we've been through a lot, and we're probably gonna, in the future, be through a lot, but I really appreciate that. Mike was really one of the first deputies I really met out here. And it was interesting, because when I went to the station, I noticed there's a plaque in there that says Legendary Lawman. And Mike was, you know, on that plaque. And I was just amazed by the fact that it's a legendary lawman. But as I got to know him, I realized, he didn't just come out here to work, he came out here really to be a part of the community. And I think that's what it's all about. He was a friend to everybody, you know, he was obviously a deputy, but he could connect with people on a lot of different levels. So I'm honored that you guys are considering me and awarded me this first-ever. I hope to be here next year, getting the second one. But we'll see what happens, right? So thank you, everybody, and I really appreciate the honor. Thanks.
Okay. So now I have a presentation of commendation to Patrick Steele and Oscar Johnson in recognition of their response to a house fire. Whereas on April 5, 2025, at approximately 1:00 PM, Oscar Johnson and Patrick Steele were riding their bicycles along Baylor Road when they detected the scent of smoke and noticed smoke rising from a neighbor's house. And whereas upon arriving at the scene, they discovered a table and trashcan engulfed in flames, immediately recognizing the danger, they placed a call to 911. And whereas Patrick Steele retrieved a fire extinguisher from his home while Oscar Johnson located water jugs from the side of the house and began dousing the flames, which had already begun to spread to the garage door. And whereas, through their quick action and teamwork, they extinguished the flames before it could cause further damage. Whereas their swift response and courageous actions prevented what could have become a far more devastating situation, and their actions serve as an important reminder that regardless of age, you can have a profound impact in your community. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the City of Malibu City Council formally commends Oscar Johnson and Patrick Steele for their heroism, civic spirit, and exemplary conduct. Their actions reflect the best of our community and embody the resilient spirit of Malibu. Presented on this 27th day of May 2025, on behalf of the Malibu City Council. Please come forward.
Well, we're thankful to receive this, because it's very nice. And we were happy we were able to help and be there and change the outcome of what could have happened.
That worst damage.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, guys.
Looks like the sheriff has something to offer.
So good evening, Oscar and Patrick. Acting Captain Dustin Carr is going to be here, but he's battling 103 fever, so I am going to do this instead. So we wanted to present to you two plaques on behalf of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department for your bravery and heroism that day. You guys are a fine example of young men that we hope all of parents here can raise. And so, we wanted to say thank you for your actions that day. It meant a lot to everybody involved, and you guys are a shining example of what a good citizen looks like. So on behalf of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, Patrick, here, I'll read this. It says, "Thank you, Patrick Steele. Your courageous and heroic actions set a great example for how residents, regardless of their age, can make a difference." And same thing, Oscar. "Your courageous and heroic actions set a great example for how residents, regardless of their age, can make a difference."
Hey, great plaque, guys. All right. Cool. Very nice.
Okay. Now we will return to our regularly scheduled programming. We'll be hearing the appeal of Planning Commission Resolution 24-021 regarding Coastal Development Permit 23-019 and Site Plan Review Number 23-024, an application to construct a new single-family residence, second unit, and associated development at 30053 Harvester Road. Owner Steve Kent, applicant, appellantants Dawn and Erickson, Paul E. Phillipsen and Andrea Slossberg Phillipsen, continued from our May 21, 2025. We will now hear item 5E. The public hearing for this item was completed on May 8, 2025. Staff is recommending we reopen the public hearing to discuss the proposed site plan modification in the agreement between Stephen Kent and Andrea and Paul Phillipsen. Do we have any disclosures since the last hearing? No? Okay. So we'll have a staff report, please.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, you guys hear me okay up there? Just a very brief presentation for you all, just as a reminder of where, how we got to this point on these two appeals for a new single-family home at 30053 Harvester Road. So these appeals were first heard at, on the April 28, 2025, City Council hearing. The hearing for this item was not opened, and that meeting was adjourned to May 8, 2025. And then on May 8, 2025, this item was first heard by the council. After about four hours of public comment, this item was continued to the May 12, 2025 council meeting. At the May 12, 2025 council meeting, this item, I'm sorry, the meeting, the entire meeting was adjourned to May 21 due to some technical difficulties that we had here at the council chambers. And then on May 21, 2025, the applicant and eastern neighbor, which is Appeal Number 24005, worked out a compromise just prior to the hearing. And then the item was then continued by this council to today's date, May 27, to give the western neighbor, Appeal Number 24-004, a chance to review the revised project. So the agreement that was worked out between the eastern neighbor and the subject applicant is shown here. Essentially, as long as the revised plan is accepted by the council and that this project does not go back to the Planning Commission, this agreement is valid between the two parties, as signed here. Just to show you what that looks like, essentially, the proposed home that was before you in those previous meetings was reduced, was lowered by two feet in height. The, the single-family home and the structures on the eastern side of the property were moved seven feet to accommodate an extra setback for the appellant on that side, as part of the agreement. So if that, if that new plan is accepted by the council and approved tonight, there's a resolution in your packet that you can review. The only added change that we would recommend is this condition here, which is to basically memorialize that agreement between those two parties. And that added condition is that the single-family residence, yoga studio, and mechanical equipment on the east side of the property- on the east side of the property shall be built in accordance with the revised plans presented at the May 27th, 2025 city council meeting and shall not be moved closer to the eastern property line. Should be noted that the western neighbor, the Appeal 24-004, is still active. There was not a deal that was worked out between those neighbors, and they still are in contention that the, that there's environmentally sensitive habitats area on the property, and they have submitted additional correspondence for tonight's meeting that was forwarded to you guys. So our recommendation, if the council is to adopt the resolution before then tonight, is to approve it with the recommended change. And we're available for any questions. Our city biologist is also available via Zoom, and I believe some professionals from either team are available as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any initial questions from the council?
I just have one quick question. Could I get a copy of that agreement while we're listening to public speakers?
Okay. So it is recommended that we open the public hearing. The scope is limited to the proposed change and items disclosed by the council members. Public comment will follow normal public comment rules. Appellant and applicant will be recognized last. So I have, first is Stacy Clunus Ross.
Good evening, council members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Honestly, it feels like Groundhog Day. Once again, we're here tonight revisiting a project that should never have been an issue to begin with. What we are seeing here is not a legitimate concern over environmental or community impacts, but rather the misuse of procedural tools by a few individuals to delay and derail responsible development. In this case, two neighbors unhappy with the development of a long vacant property of weaponized ESHA designations and so-called view corridors to obstruct progress. Their appeals ongoing for over a year have placed an undue burden on city staff and city council, consuming time and resources for a project that has already been approved. Steve and Gladys Kent have followed every rule. Their proposal meets all applicable zoning requirements, including setbacks, height limits, and total development square footage. The planning commission approved the project with full support from city staff, confirming its compliance. To change the rules after the fact would set a dangerous precedent. It undermines trust in the city's planning process and sends a message that responsible development, even when done by the book, is subject to arbitrary and shifting standards. We urge the council to reaffirm the original approval and put an end to this cycle. Last Wednesday, this council had the perfect opportunity to vote on this project, but instead, it seems like we're being pulled into something much bigger, an attempt to set a precedent about what defines neighborhood character. Let's be clear about when a neighborhood character assessment is actually appropriate. It's really only needed when a project has the potential to cause significant adverse impacts on the defining elements of that neighborhood. So let's ask the question, what defines our neighborhood? Well, we've seen the evidence, and the truth is, there is no single defining character. Thanks to Stephen Kent's presentation, we've all seen the pictures of homes throughout our neighborhoods, much larger than this project, and they are all over the map. There are oversized modern boxes, Tuscan villas, Spanish revivals, and modern farmhouses. If anything, our neighborhood is defined by variety, not uniformity. Simply said, there is no definitive neighborhood character. This project does not pose an adverse impact. The rendering Steve showed is a well-designed home that is beautifully terraced into the landscape. Its organic materials are respectful and thoughtful. It's complimentary, and it fits. So instead of focusing on architecture or arbitrary visual styles, let's consider the real character of our neighborhood, things like good human beings, good citizens, and a spirit of kindness, care, and most of all, community. That's the Malibu I remember, and I hope that's the Malibu this council is still working to preserve. Thank you.
Hello, City Council. Deana Moore, again. I'm going to make this quick because I really didn't know I was going to be able to speak because I thought we were only speaking on the changes. But since I'm here and able to speak, fellow Woolsey Fire survivor, not able to rebuild or break ground yet. Since then, everybody knows our story. It was on the front page of the LA Times. Since then, we've been wanting to rebuild and wanting to figure out why it's been so difficult for us, attending city council meetings, planning commission meetings, and I'm getting, starting to get a clearer picture of why it's been so difficult and where everything is bottlenecking. Not even our personal story, but since we've gone forward, a lot of other stories have come out, and I just, I'm blown away by how difficult it is to build here. I don't, last week, when I heard there was a resolution between one of the appellants and the builder, I got really choked up because just, just hearing that people were being neighborly, that's how we're supposed to be. So I honestly didn't know I was going to speak, and that's all I wanted to say. I'm just hoping that we get past this so people from Woolsey, like us, can finally rebuild, and people from Palisades can rebuild, and anybody who follows the rules and gets things in and done right can rebuild. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mike Moore, followed by Gladys Fernandez-Kent, followed by Scott Dietrich.
Hey, City Council. Matt Abon, it's good to see you here. Thank you for your service as ambassador over in the Caribbean. Like yourself, I flew many missions under Department of State aircraft and DOD and other government agencies. I think I have a unique skill set during the five years I was deploying to Iraq and Africa. It was in ISR, intelligence surveillance and reconnaissance, looking at pattern of life and identifying high-value targets and persons of interest. And it wasn't until the Franklin Fire and then the Palisades Fire that I said enough is enough. I got to figure out what's going on here in Malibu. Why is it so hard to build? And sitting in on some city council meetings and figuring out who the players are and who are the persons of interest and taking notes. And it's interesting, both you and I, we didn't grow up here in Malibu. We came from a different upbringing from a lot of these people. Pretty wealthy, trust fund kids, in my opinion. So where we grew up, we grew up in a gang-infested area. I know my friends are friends of rival gangs. It's kind of the same thing that I'm seeing here, seeing like gang members, different gangs, big gangs. And then you have to get smaller gangs with attorneys and expeditors in order to do stuff. Me and Deana, it's just the two of us after Woolsey. We expected our city council members to do the right thing. When the governor came out here, two governors, in fact, Brown and the current governor Newsom, along with the president at the time, 2018, November, right? They gave an order to cut the red tape, right? That wasn't, that wasn't accomplished by the junior leadership here in the chain of command. I put full faith in that. And disclosure, once again, it's like Mullin, he was my, he was my CO in the ring for, right? I haven't had any contact with him, so I don't know what the drama was going on when Mullin and Reva and everything, you know, that whole mess. But, you know, we're here, we're taking notes, and this gang over here, whatever, you know, using ESHA, theoretical ESHAs as a cudgel to get their way when they could have, you know, they could have bought that property and left it vacant, you know? So, I mean, there's solutions here, but people need to start talking to each other instead of passing laws and then using theoretical ESHAs as cudgel to get their way. You know, this is ridiculous. We've had so many friends and families leave this, this community after Woolsey, it's a shame, and this is wise because of this intimidation that's going on here.
Thank you. Gladys Fernandez-Kent, followed by Scott Dietrich, followed by Joe Drummond.
Good evening, members of City Council. Even though our project is 100% compliant with all of the Malibu code standards, as has been approved by your planning commission, we went ahead and reached a compromise with one of our neighbors, the Phillipsens. Council now has a win-win situation and a clear path forward if you choose to take it. We did this out of compassion for our neighbors, the Phillipsens, and to help you make the decision easier. We hope that we will not be penalized further for doing so. Your planning staff has made the determination that the proposed modification is in substantial conformance. It is our understanding that staff is recommending council approve our project with this minor Our agreement with the Phillipsens is contingent upon our project not being kicked back to planning commission and will be void if that were to happen. Council does not, if council does not think that it has the authority to approve our project with the main house shifted seven feet, then we will need to withdraw our agreement with the Phillipsens and proceed with the planning commission-approved project as is. To be clear, only the main house has been shifted in the new proposed plan. The yoga studio has not moved, the ADU has not moved. With regards to the ADU, we will not be held hostage by a neighbor and her overzealous attorney trying to create fake ESHA. The city biologist has ruled four times in writing that the neighbor's property is not ESHA or stream. There are two other well, very well-qualified biologists backing her up on this. Our biologist, Marcus England, stated in his report, "Of critical importance here is that the city biologist is typically the final authority on the presence or absence of ESHA based on the documentation available." We cannot see council taking these false ESHA claims seriously, but if so, it will set up a very dangerous precedent, paving the way for even more frivolous appeals backed by the MTC going forward. Our biologist, Marcus England, summed it up best in his report when he said, "It was not likely the intent of the city that landowners with adjacent undeveloped parcels can quote-unquote 'create' a non-existent ESHA at their property boundary in order to prevent their neighbor from using their land." We hope that city council can see through this nonsense and approve our project tonight without further delay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Scott Dietrich, followed by Joe Drummond.
Excuse me for being out of the room, but I'll be very quick. Yeah, it can be a great project, but it's too big for neighborhood standards. I'm told, I don't know if it's true, that it's a total of 8,000 square feet. That's too big. And if it's going through planning, what happened to our neighborhood standards? That's my main point. If we're allowing something, I don't care if it's one building or five, that's 8,000 square foot total, and planning's going, well, that's okay, there's something wrong, and we need to fix it so that the applicant and everybody else knows exactly what they're allowed to do. If Steve has met all the requirements, he should be able to go ahead and not go through a year of turmoil. This is, that's wrong to force him to do that. But if the requirements allow him to go way above neighborhood standards, we've got a problem, and we've got to fix it. Thanks.
Thank you. Joe Drummond, you had a second speaker, Clee Van Hamerswell?
Yeah.
Is that, Clee, are you here?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, you have four minutes.
I'm just waiting for the slideshow. So, Honorable Counsel, as a fire victim, I hear the Moores. I understand that fire rebuilds that are 10% or lower should take a priority over any huge project, 8,000, 9,000 square feet, Malibu Park or wherever, Point Doom. This is what we're talking about here. This project, this is the new, new height. Apparently, from the lowest grade, it is 34 feet high. From the highest grade, it's 22 feet high. I don't know where the two feet that they lost were, but anything above 18 feet should not be allowed for this project just because it's, the, it's, the neighbors are not happy, basically. The ADU is 21 feet high from the lowest grade, so that is not allowed in the city codes, and the main house would be 11 feet higher than that from that, from there, from, from the lower, from the ADU, from entering the ADU. And why do they need all that space in between? I don't know. Here's the code that says ADUs can be no higher than 16 feet, and if it's within one mile or half a mile of a bus stop, it can be 18 feet, but this isn't even, I think it's at least a mile before the bus stop. And then all this, this was completed in 2019 by Casray Consulting for the post-Woolsey Fire, and all of the light green apparently is watershed, so that is ESHA. So just, even if it's not marked ESHA in their maps, it is marked in this map here. And then there has been two independent biological reports, not just one, one from 2024 and one 2025 from Travis Longcor and one from Lauren Harris, that indicate multiple native trees between the two adjacent parcels. Bottom line, this almost 8,000 square foot feat of development is over three times the size of the adjacent neighbors and most of the homes on Harvester Road. They cannot make the following findings. It is not the least environmentally damaging at its current height, size, and encroachment on the watershed area that was mapped in 2019 after the Woolsey Fire. Two, it cannot satisfy the Neighborhood Standards Section 17.40.04016. It is at least twice the size, larger than 80% of the homes within 500 feet. I think there was maybe five homes with the whole, in the whole neighborhood, further than 500 feet, that were within, not even close to the 8,000, but it was, they were up there, like 5,000 maybe. Needs a variance or buffer for ESHA encroachment and must abide by city's native tree protection ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Am I taking Zoom speakers and then the appellants and applicant?
Yes, we should hear public comment from Zoom before the appellant and applicant speak.
Okay, I have one question. I do have speakers for appellate two. Is that part of their team, or are they public, general public comment?
So we have speakers from both groups of appellants and the applicant. The way public comment is structured tonight, they don't need to speak as a team, but we are reserving their slips to be heard last, so they have an opportunity to rebut public comment.
Okay. So, Frank Angel, do you want to speak after public comment or with the appellate two? With the appellate? Okay. So Zoom speakers?
There's seven raised hands. First is Thomas Spencer.
Okay, and let's note the seven hands and no additional.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's Thomas Spencer. We heard from a handful of speakers before the, the MTC mob of Joe spoke. Bruce, Steve, you guys have all been elected to represent the public and not just the MTC and Joe and what they want. First of all, I'll just say this out loud, this project meets everything that it's supposed to. My house burned down too, Joe, but I don't seem to spend my time trying to fight other people getting what, what they have in terms of their property rights. You know, and I think no matter how much Bruce wants to try to insert himself and not allow people to get what they, what they deserve, you know, by going along with this fake ESHA thing, which is fake. The city's biologist has ruled a bunch of times, but nobody still really seems to want to abide by that. You know, this, this is not a court of law, Bruce. The appellants aren't your clients. Your job is to, to see if this project is up to code and it conforms. Your job is to see if this project is up to code and it conforms and not make up legal theories or try to set precedent about anybody who wants to throw some rocks and some shrubs on their property to create Esha to stop people from building things. This is just another clear example of what's wrong in Malibu. You know, we focus and spend a lot of time trying to tear down our neighbors or turn in our neighbors and create precedent that doesn't exist. You know, we heard the property owner get up and say they cut a deal, even though that's going to give them less of what they deserve. But they're still willing to do it because they want to live in Malibu. So, let's just stop the BS. Let's give people what they deserve. Let's stop fighting everything, Bruce, because that's what you do. You fight everything. You don't want to approve anything for anyone. And Joe, what are you doing with your time? Seriously? You show up and create a PowerPoint deck so you can knock these people down? This is ridiculous. And this is why Malibu is starting to fail as a city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Edith Reed.
Ms. Reed, are you available? Edith, are you available?
You should see a pop-up. There you go. You're unmuted.
Yeah. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Edith Reed. I'm a biological consultant for the applicant. The biological inventory that I prepared and other comments with regard to the Esha and the biological conditions on the site have already been a matter of record. So, I don't want to lengthen this time by going into detail. I just wanted to say that I'm available if needed.
Thank you very much, Ms. Reed. Next speaker?
Dhan, D-H-A-Y-A-N, Rourke.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you can hear me. Okay. Yeah, I spoke in the initial public hearing, and, you know, I've worked in Malibu for 25 years, lived on and off the street area, and my family is from the area and have long-time roots here. I'll beat a dead horse here. You know, there's nothing in that. I've been to the site. I've taken inventory of the plants. You know, I was there before the Planning Commission hearing. 90% of the trees in the so-called fake Esha are invasive, okay? There's a couple of small California walnuts that I didn't see there that are in the photos. I'm guessing those were planted in the last year and a half. And I see some toyons. Those aren't found normally in riparian environments. So, this isn't Esha by any definition I've ever seen or even by any stretch of any imagination. If people are calling it Esha, they're just making stuff up. That's my professional and personal opinion. As far as the applicant, I mean, look at the character of Stephen Gladys. They've already made concessions before the Planning Commission approval, and now they've made more concessions just as goodwill and to make this process easier. And, you know, they're being penalized for being good neighbors and being nice and doing everything right. And in my career, I've seen this over and over. I mean, almost everyone in Malibu has at least one bad neighbor. Some have more. And, you know, you see just people fighting, and when the people are being nice, they get taken advantage of. And it's just so frustrating to see this. And, you know, like everyone else is saying, this process has been weaponized, you know. And what they're really doing is taking the resources away from the people, from the fire victims, and it should be going to getting their projects approved. So, yeah, I'd just like to express my dismay for what I'm seeing here and, you know, frustration at being back here speaking publicly again, you know, and beating the dead horse. Anyway, I am in strong support of the Kent project. It should pass, and I hope the council will do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's our next speaker?
Stephen Gubin.
Steve, are you available?
Yes. Hi there. My name is Stephen Gubin. I am an architect who has worked on many hillside and fire rebuild projects in Malibu. And I'm here again to speak in support of this project. This home was designed with care and restraint, and it fits the hillside naturally, stays well within all height setbacks and grading limits, and avoids the bulk and scale we often see pushed to the limit of what is allowed. It reflects a clear understanding of Malibu's terrain and regulatory framework. It meets the code and has been fully vetted and approved by all relevant agencies. Since the last hearing, several of my personal clients have reached out to me with a simple question. Could the same thing happen to their projects even after securing approval? It's a fair concern, because when a fully compliant project like this can still be thrown into uncertainty, it undermines confidence in the process. These kind of appeals don't just cause delays. They put significant investment at risk. The message becomes, following the rules may not be enough, and outcomes can shift based on pressure, not policy. It's a dangerous precedent, and it makes it hard for anyone to move forward with clarity or confidence. Let me be direct. Using subjective arguments about neighborhood character or misapplying the term "least environmentally damaging alternative" to block a project like this sets a harmful precedent. It risks overriding TDSF allowances and undermines compliance standards across the board. And in Malibu Park, where many large homes exist, some not even observing the two-thirds rule, those arguments simply don't hold up. In good faith, the applicants voluntarily agreed to move their home an additional seven feet away from the eastern neighborhood, seven feet that they are allowed by right. Planning staff confirmed this was a minor modification, one that won't trigger a return of the approval process. They made a generous concession and should not be penalized with further review. Please support this project and allow the Kent family to move forward with building their home. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
David Vort.
David, are you available?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, I'm speaking tonight not just as a supporter of architect Steve Kent and his proposed project, but as someone who loves this town. Malibu isn't just where we live. It's a place we all protect. It's a community defined by its spirit, its people, and its deep respect for land, for home, and for one another. But lately, watching what's happened around this project, I felt a growing sadness because what I've seen is not the best of Malibu. It's the worst of politics. Let's call this what it is, not a question of compliance, but a crusade built on disinformation. First, the accusation that this is a so-called McMansion was thoroughly debunked. Steve Kent brought this in the renderings, showed the scale, the design, the aesthetics. This project fits beautifully into the neighborhood. That narrative fell apart the moment that facts were introduced at the last meeting. Next, we heard claims that this is a fire hazard. But let's be real, some of the same neighbors raising this alarm have yards surrounded by eucalyptus trees, which we all know are non-native and among the most combustible vegetation in Malibu. If fire safety's the concern, then let's be consistent and honest about it. Then claims about endangered species, complete with videos of animals that were misidentified and misrepresented at the last meeting. Yet your own city biologist, not an outsider, but someone hired by this very city, confirmed that this is not an Esha site. Still, we see people bringing in opposing biologists to muddy the waters and sow doubt. At what point do we stop undermining our experts just because we don't like the answer? We now reached a point where "native trees", in quotations, have mysteriously appeared on a lot that's never supported them before. I don't know how else to say this. It defies logic. The water flowing through the gully, it's runoff from engineered culverts. This is not a stream. It's drainage. That's not my opinion. That's infrastructure. Even the claim of height violations, already disproven. Your own development person went out and measured it on his own. It's in code. This is a textbook case of a project being done by the book and yet still being dragged through the mud because a small group of loud voices don't want it. And that's fine. Personal opposition is everyone's right. But as council members, your duty isn't to personal opinion. It's to the law, to the facts, and to fair governance. To those of you who ran on an anti-sprawl agenda, I respect your passion and the voters who supported you, but obstruction's not leadership. If you want to limit future development, then do the hard work, change the zoning codes, revise the permit system, have the real policy debate, but don't sabotage good projects that follow every rule just because you disagree with it.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Quesi Asamoah.
Yes.
Would you repeat your name, please?
My name is Quesi.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. I mean, you know, I feel as if I'm going to be repeating a lot of the previous speakers, but I am also here. I am a friend of Mr. Kent's. We've worked professionally for the last number of years. I've known him as a phenomenal architect, very thoughtful. And what he is building is his own personal home. I've listened to the last four hearings, and to say I'm shocked wouldn't even be the proper adjective. First, I don't understand what the point of having a city geologist is when all of her recommendations have basically been not allowed or gone unheard. Four different times, she's said that this project, or that the Esha is not an Esha and that is a culvert and that it doesn't meet the requirements of an Esha. And four different times, it has been somewhat glazed over. I believe it was the last meeting, the appellant brought in a geographer, not a practicing geologist, but an education geographer to disprove a city geologist as well as three other practicing geologists. And then my main point is basically this entire process. It's been said multiple times by many different people, but Mr. Kent had designed this project per the city codes, per the building codes, per the planning codes. What is the point of having these codes? If you follow the codes and then a disgruntled neighbor can say that they don't like the project, and then the city council spends eight months going over and over and having multiple appeals to review the design of the project? I guess in conclusion, Mr. Kent's project, it works. It works on all levels. It's a beautiful project. It's one that he has made accommodations for one of his neighbors, even though he did not need to. And you should allow this project to move forward, and we should stop having all of these meetings, you know, once a month, twice a month. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have one more?
Ryan.
Ryan, go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. This sounds like, unfortunately, a deja vu and a repeat of a prior hearing where the same people come in and they start talking about people and their architectural abilities. These are other architects in the Malibu community. And, you know, whether the occupants proposed for this house are nice people and how the neighbors are all bad people. And again, we don't evaluate homes based on who might live in them. That's totally inappropriate to be vilifying neighbors who purchased or built properties already that exist, cannot be changed, and then have an applicant come in and smash their property, their development right up to one side and block views and all sorts of things. So, sorry to maybe repeat that. I'm going to try and limit it to what the changes are here. But the sighting of the residence is the issue because of its view blockage to the neighbors, a private view, historic view, a significant ocean view. And I wanted to ask, and I did ask, that the policy 20 of the city be presented during my time to speak, so Parker can put that up. This policy's 28 years and has spanned more than two dozen city councils. This is an operative policy with an implementation program. And it says here that the city, in approving these developments, that they shall consider and protect the private property rights of the citizens, the residents. The residents are already here and don't have a clean sheet opportunity that they're working with. So, "The city shall carefully consider the private property rights of the residents of the city in establishing regulations governing land use." That's what we're talking about. When programs or projects, which this is, are proposed for implementation, that's what's before you. Protection of private property rights shall be a prime consideration in program and project design. So, we all know that there's a lot of lingo going around that, you know, you can say it 100 times. It doesn't make it true that there's no Esha. Everybody can see that there's Esha in a stream there. It just hasn't been channelized or put in a pipe like some other sections have already been on other properties that are not under consideration. So...
Thank you, Ryan. Okay, I received a late slip.
The speaker inadvertently submitted their speaker slip for the wrong item number. They intended to speak on 5E.
Okay. Norm Haney? And this will conclude public speakers as we go to the appellants and the applicants.
I'm just going to talk about the development standards that the city has applied to all the projects that have come before in the last 20 years. Basically, there is specific setback requirements. Those setback requirements are specifically made so that the house is not too close to the neighbor's house. On both sides, this project meets those side yard setbacks. With regard to the environment, the water flows in that area along the property line intermittently. In my street, the water flows in the gutter intermittently. It doesn't make it an ecologically sensitive habitat area. So, I would follow the city biologist in this. That's what she gets paid for. She didn't go out to this site one time, not two times. She went out three times and had the opportunity to say, "This could possibly qualify as an ecologically sensitive habitat area." She didn't do that. She did the opposite. This is not a sensitive habitat area. One neighbor, I think on the west, doesn't like it because the house meets the side yard setback and is only 12 feet high. Could be 18 feet high, but it's only 12 feet high. The other neighbor wants a bigger setback. You're either going to follow the Malibu's development standards or you're not. And if you don't, then we don't know what to start with. We don't know what to end with. The applicant made a suggestion, seven-foot further setback, as I understand it. If you can't accept it tonight, don't. Approve the project without the setback, additional setback. If you can, then I would do it. The development standards were created to protect the neighbor, and they do. The neighbor's just not happy with the amount of protection. There are certain reasons why the development standards can be overlooked for some other development standard, but only when it furthers the goals and objectives of the city of Malibu. The reasons why the setback is required sometimes can be increased by modifications to the setback. I don't believe this is one of those cases. I'm not getting paid. I appear on a regular basis in front of you, and I... and I depend upon the development standards. Thank you for your time.
Okay, so we're going to go to appellate number one. And this will be the Phillipsons. I have Paul first and then Andrea. Okay, that's fine. Would you come to the microphone, please?
At the beginning, there was some mention of a change today in the, in the layout for the agreement. Did I misunderstand that? Because I've never seen or heard about anything. And our agreement was that all the mechanicals were moving and all the buildings along that line were moving. I heard today, just now, that, that there was a change to this? Is, is there something?
The yoga studio was not.
Is that all? What about the mechanicals?
Ken.
We can put it back up. From what I understood, the mechanical equipment got vaulted? It got lowered into the ground, is that correct?
There's two sets of mechanicals. We agreed that the pool equipment could get lowered into the ground and the air conditioning was going up farther beyond the garage towards the back property.
Okay. It should be. Let me show you the plan and you can tell us if it's not. So he, here it is. I, I'm not sure which equipment. Let me try to zoom in. But there's equipment that's, can you see my, um, mouse here? There's equipment here now. Correct. So this dash line in red?
Sir, if you can come to the microphone so everyone can hear your questions.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Just trying to talk to Tyler, sorry.
No problem. So, uh, Mr. Phillips, and as you see on this plan, uh, the red dash line represents the previous project. So the basis of your appeal. Uh, the agreement is the, you know, the black lines. And so the house was lowered two feet, as I understand. And the house was also pushed seven feet to the west away from you. And that's represented in the dotted line. Okay. And then the equipment was vaulted. The, the, I don't know if it's the pool equipment or the, um, mechanical equipment on the, on your side was vaulted. And then the pool equipment was pushed to the back of the property.
That's backwards. The pool equipment will be lowered closer to the pool and the air conditioning, other equipment, including the fire suppression, was going to be in the back behind the garage.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. That's what, that should be what's shown here on the plan.
So.
Okay, thank you. That's all I, I just heard.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
Okay. Okay. Good evening, council members.
If you could speak close to the microphone, thank you. You can pull it down towards you.
We come before you today not as developers or investors, but as longtime residents, neighbors who have lived on the eastern border of 30053 Harvester for over 22 years. We are here to advocate for our home, our well-being, and the integrity of our neighborhood, not for profit, but for, for preservation. The proposed development by Stephen Kent at 30053 Harvester Road is not just another home. It's a massive residential compound that includes a 4,270 square foot, two-story main residence with a large basement, a 750 square foot attached three-car garage, multiple detached structures, including a second unit detached garage and a yoga studio, a swimming pool, extensive landscaping, hardscaping, and grading. Mr. Kent is asking to exceed the city's rural residential zoning height limit of 18 feet and instead build up to 24 feet. This is not a small variance. It's a fundamental disregard of the rules designed to protect Malibu's open, peaceful, and scenic character. And it directly harms us, his immediate neighbors. We are reasonable, rational people. We welcome new neighbors. But this proposal harms us. It looms over our property, invades our privacy, erases our light, and blocks our primary view determination, a view that is protected by the city ordinance. We've tried to understand. I've reached out to the planning director, the city attorney, to ask why the approved plans show one elevation while the story poles clearly indicate construction that violates the 18-foot height limit within our protected view corridor. That alone should have halted the project, but it didn't. Instead, we have faced threats, manipulation, and dismissiveness. All the while, we've acted in group faith. We never asked Mr. Kent for compensation for the impacts on our home, our privacy, our views, our defensible space. We simply asked for respect, for the rules to be followed and for the truth to be honored. Don Erickson, another local resident like us, has appealed this project because it violates Malibu's building codes, disrupts our neighborhood character.
Thank you.
And performs environmental safety.
Thank you. We appreciate this time. To thank the city council for all we've been through the past month. We strongly urge this council to send the development proposed for 30053 Harvester Road back to planning for further review. We understand this will end our agreement with Mr. Kent, but the risk is worth our personal interest for a better outcome for all who are adversely impacted by this project. Our agreement with Mr. Kent was a capitulation, not a compromise. The relentless pressure and vigorous pursuit for this agreement by Mr. Kent was fueled by his coercive threat. And this is a quote. "If I am forced to move my ADU closer to you, I will lower the roofline to 18 feet and apply for a variance to move the buildings closer to your home than already approved." We were forced to accept the additional seven-foot setback or risk having the development cause further harm and devastate our home. Mr. Kent misled us to believe that he had been granted permission by the principal planner and the city attorney to promise the changes on the setback. This is what he told me. This is last week. I was on the phone with Tyler the night before the hearing while Tyler was driving home from work around 8 o'clock, advising Mr. Kent that Trevor recommended leaving the ADU where it was positioned to prohibit Frank Angel from improving the position of the Don Erickson appeal. How can we, mere residents of Malibu, contend with the bravado and prowess alleged by Mr. Kent, who demonstrated support from the city staff and legal counsel throughout these proceedings? Whether the story is true or not, it's equally disturbing for different reasons. Mr. Kent misled all of us, stating that there was no feasible alternative site possible, site plan possible, when for his own purposes, he created and sent us an alternative site plan within hours of meeting with us. Nonetheless, during the days preceding our agreement, Mr. Kent was professional, accommodating, and careful to document the promises he made to lessen the adverse impact to our home and view. We hope this better understanding between us and Mr. Kent, as well as all that has been learned and promised throughout this project review, will help shape any new plan for a new home in our neighborhood by respecting the residents, protecting our fire safety, and preserving wildlife habitat. We trust this council will share their insights with the planning department staff as the next plan for development is evaluated and ask that neighborhood character and our home's PVD serve as guidelines for a better outcome for everyone and everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so. Go ahead.
Trevor, is it okay to ask one question? I'm confused. Wait, Mr. Phillips?
I think we all are.
I don't understand if the appeal, I'd like to know if the appeal is being withdrawn pursuant to this agreement, but could be upset if this goes back to planning or if the appeal's not being withdrawn? If you could, see, Ms. Phillips? Wait, Ms. Phillips? Could you, could you just answer the very simple question? Is the appeal being withdrawn?
We urge you to send this back to planning.
Is it a yes or a no? Is your appeal being withdrawn?
I don't know how to answer that.
You either want your appeal to go forward or you don't.
What position do, do I have? Have you accepted it? It doesn't sound like you have.
We haven't had, we have not deliberated yet. We've certainly not reached a conclusion yet. It's anyone's guess where this is going. But I need to understand, I think we all need to understand, whether your appeal is go, is alive or whether it is withdrawn.
Last meeting, Mr. Kent assured us that it was over. That's what he told us. He had got it all worked out. And then at the meeting, it was not worked out. So should we withdraw it? We want it to go back to planning. We don't feel it's a compromise. We feel like if we were forced to make a decision, otherwise we would have an unbearable situation. So that's where we're at. We, we have either an unbearable situation or maybe a better situation. We want a compromise. That's what we want. And we feel our hands have been tied, that we haven't, we've been threatened. So I don't know how to answer that.
I, I've listened carefully to everything everyone has said, both the prior hearing that we had as well as tonight. And I'm going to continue to listen to what everyone still hasn't spoken. And I empathize with your situation. But, but we, we need to know from a procedural standpoint whether there is or is not a live appeal on your application.
I don't know why we should answer. And in fact, the deal that we made with Mr. Kent was, your deci, your decision is your decision. We've expressed all of what happened to us, including the vilification, for weeks now. But either the council decides that it should go back to planning for reasons that you kind of said last time about the grading differences and other issues, or we're going to have to abide by the agreement we made.
But that's a different question than whether your appeal is still pending.
My understanding is until the agreement is in force, our appeal would be in force.
Trevor, can you help?
Yeah. So my understanding is that you, your agreement is that if the city council approves the project with the condition as proposed, that you are withdrawing your appeal. Is that correct?
Yes. If, if the council approves the project as it is already approved with the setback as redefined.
Yes.
Then yes, we're going to have to abide by that agreement. We understand.
You're withdrawing it if that condition is included in the approval? Okay.
We made agreement that if they, if they vote one way, that the project stands, that we have a setback, a setback.
That's not what he said.
So.
Yeah. The, my understanding is that if the project is approved with the condition that Tyler put on to the, onto the screen, that you're withdrawing your appeal, as long as that condition's included.
That's fair and correct. That's what we signed for. That's correct.
Again, you're saying we're, you're agreeing to moving it seven feet, but then we're withdrawing it?
No, no. He's, he's got it.
So if, if the site plan that's attached to your signed agreement is what is accepted by the city council, you are satisfied and you feel as if?
You're withdrawing? That's not satisfy the standards. The question is withdrawing the deal.
Please don't put words in our mouth. We, we accept our agreement as written. If, 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 if that's the way the council votes, then we have to abide by our agreement, yes. If the council votes to go back to planning, the agreement ends and we start over again. That would be our understanding.
Okay. Does the council understand? So if it does approve it with that condition, the appellant is saying that the appeal is withdrawn if, if the approval includes that condition, correct?
Yes, I think you stated it fairly.
Okay, thank you.
I still need to understand, sorry. So what I'm looking at is a signed agreement between the applicant and the appellant. And in the bottom, it says this offer is conditional upon CDP, blah, 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 being approved by Malibu City Council, which is us, and not being sent back to planning commission.
Correct. So I think, they, they can't control the discretion of the council. If the council choose to send it to planning commission or to approve it without having that condition, then their appeal is not withdrawn. The only way they're withdrawing the appeal is if you approve the project with the condition that was put onto the screen.
Any additional questions by the council? Is everyone clear?
Oh, man, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
I just need more clarity. Sorry, everybody.
If it goes back to the planning commission, the appeal's gone, right? The deal is gone.
The deal is gone. If the coun, if the council decides to send us back to the planning commission, then their deal blows up and they still have the rights to, to appeal. The appeal is not withdrawn.
Okay. This was a twist.
It's the same agreement. They said they will honor the agreement that if the condition's included in the approval, then they are withdrawing their appeal.
Are you ready?
I'm ready for it.
Okay. Okay. Um, so Frank Angel and Jefferson, are you donating your time to Frank or you're going to speak separately? Donating, thank you. So you have four minutes.
Ms. Erickson also donated some.
I, oh.
Don submitted her own speaker slip. Don, are you deferring your time to Frank Angel?
Okay, it was attached to Dominique's slip. So, okay, so Frank, you have Don and Jefferson?
Correct.
Okay, total of five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. When I hear MAGA terminology comments, fake Esha and that kind of thing, a red flag goes up in my hand immediately. And I always say to my daughter and my granddaughter, when you hear this kind of stuff, the comment is fake, not what the target of the comment is. And in this case, Esha has been demonstrated, not just by a leading biogeographer, teacher at USC and at UCLA professor there, associate professor, but also someone with decades of experience on the county's environmental review board. But aside from all of that, all biologists, including the city biologists, agree that this is an ephemeral water course. And that being so, then the conclusion is following as a logical extension of what's in the LCP. Then it is an Esha because the Esha, because the LCP defines stream as water courses that don't have to be running year-round, that can be intermittent or periodic, as is the terminology employed by the LCP. So when you talk about following the rules, the rule is, since it is a stream, the rule then in the LCP is it is an Esha and it is one when you go there. You've seen it. You've seen the pictures of the water flowing down the creek or the creek bed. And it is not an, it is not an improved stream. It's not a paved, um, bed. So please remember, don't see, since the drainage at the bottom of the westerly ravine qualifies as a stream under your LCP, qualifies as an Esha. And so we ask you to please add a condition, if you don't want to return it to the planning commission. I would ask you just to add a condition that the ADU either be removed or recited east of the access road, of the onsite access road. That's a very small ask to protect the Esha. We're not asking that you deny someone's right to build a single-family home. We have never, and anything that you've heard to the contrary isn't true because all our comments bear up. We have never opposed the building of a single-family home on this property. All we're asking is add a condition, just as you're adding a condition for the other appellant, that it be removed seven feet from the house. Add a condition that the ADU be removed. Or if it doesn't get removed, that there then also be revised plans for this appellant, that it be recited east of the access road. And they can proceed and they can build. And had they agreed to that, that was an offer we had made a year ago, he would long since be having pulled his building permits. One final point, the last time I spoke before you, I emphasized the fact that north of the project site, that north of the project site, the stream at issue crosses a culvert underneath Cuthbert Road, or that downstream while crossing Harvester Road, it flows through a corrugated pipe culvert before reemerging further south. That cannot negate its Asha status. And let me explain why. Because nothing in the LCP creates an exception to stream Asha status based on those offsite conditions, offsite conditions. Whereas here, the channel itself is outlined where it matters. That is, along the bottom of the ravine, where new development is proposed, deep within the 100-foot setback buffer, which no one has disputed as well, and meets the definition of the Asha stream. So please note also, as a final comment, that very similar underground culvert baseline conditions exist upstream and downstream of the drainage along the western edge of the nearby Malibu Middle School and High School campus. There, a culvert at the cul-de-sac of Clover Heights Avenue carries flow underground. And at its downstream end, drainage flows are collected by a pipe culvert. There, just as here, surface water flows are ephemeral. And when the Coastal Commission approved the LCPA for the campus, no city official, no city biologist, no one was the Coastal Commission, no one was the applicant, made the absurd claim that just because that other stream segment's ephemeral nature or the offsite culvers, because that has an ephemeral nature or because there are offsite culvers through which it flows into a natural stream bed, that for that reason, it isn't Asha.
Thank you.
And that's a precedent. Thank you very much.
Dominic Navarro?
Thank you for having me. The change to Kent's huge development is just seven feet on the east property line. But Kent's change also altered the position of the ADU on the west side of the property, even if only by a few feet. When you look closely, you see the building pad for the ADU and second garage is only seven feet from the property line in Asha. The story polls don't show you the extent of the concrete building pads. An Asha is environmentally sensitive habitat area for wildlife in a seasonal stream. The Malibu High School is restoring their Asha downstream of the Kent property. An Asha requires 100-feet setbacks for development, but Kent gives only a seven-foot setback from the Asha. Kent's development is huge and sprawling. Along with an ADU, second garage, and septic leach field next to the Asha, Kent plans to, he includes a pool fence around the entire property that is impenetrable to wildlife and against LCP rules. Kent says there is no Asha because he tried to cut it down. In 2023, when Kent bought his property, he immediately hired a worker to cut down plants along the property line. The worker came onto Dawn's property and cut down large protected old toyon trees with a chainsaw, until I stopped him. Dawn contacted Kent, and he bought her three small toyons and had the worker plant them on Dawn's property. Now Kent accuses Dawn of planting trees in the Asha. Kent refuses to compromise with Dawn. Instead, he had his lawyer send her an illegal letter threatening to sue her if she appealed. After the woolsey fire destroyed Dawn's home, the city of Malibu told her that she had to rebuild her house with the setback from the Asha. She followed the rules, and she built a smaller house on the original footprint of the old one. She has lived here 55 years. Kent is a developer. He has developed over two dozen homes throughout Malibu in the past 20 years. And many of those homes, he has called his "dream" home before he sells it and moves on to the next development. What is Malibu's neighborhood character? Kent will tell you, because he is committed to building mansions throughout Malibu. Out of 20 homes designed by Kent, the average is over 5,000 square feet. Is neighborhood character massive developments designed not for families, but rentals, flippers, and drug rehab centers? Is it sprawling concrete with no room for wildlife or water to stream to the ocean naturally? Here's the question you have to answer. Is this proposed development at 30053 Harvester the least environmentally damaging alternative? Obviously, the answer is no. There are alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Kent? You have Colleen Macbeth? Colleen, could you raise your hand? She needs to be here. She's going to donate her time. Is she still here?
I think she is.
Okay. How about Craig Lunas Ross? Okay. So you have four minutes.
Could you put the next slide up? All right. Hello, city council members.
If you could speak close to the mic, please. Thank you.
Hello, city council members. First of all, I'd like to walk you through the agreement we reached with our neighbors, the Phillipsons. On the slide there, you can see only the main house has shifted. The ADU and the yoga studio are not shifted or changed. Also, the main house is two feet lower. Before I met with the Phillipsons to discuss moving the house, I made 100% sure Planning considered this a minor modification and that it would be substantial conformance. As you know, both Tyler and Maureen have recommended that you approve this minor modification without needing to go back to Planning Commission. Also, when we made this agreement with the Phillipsons, I was very clear that the agreement was conditional upon city council approval and would be voided if we were kicked back to the Planning Commission for any reason. Now that the Phillipsons have agreed to drop their appeal, we hope council does not spend hours talking about neighborhood character and other issues pertaining to that appeal. The only remaining appeal on the table is solely about an imaginary Asha that our neighbor has tried to create. The city biologist has ruled four separate times in writing that there is no Asha or stream. I think it is safe to say this is unprecedented. We feel that it would be a big mistake for council to go against the city biologist, especially when two other highly respected biologists have comprehensively determined that there is no Asha or stream, despite the biogeographer that was just mentioned. Additionally, planning staff has repeatedly stated there is no Asha in all of the staff reports dating back to the beginning of our project. Of course, Planning Commission has consistently recommended approval of our project without qualification. If city council were to rule that Ms. Erickson somehow created a new Asha against planning staff and the city biologist, this would open up a Pandora's box to all future projects. Then the floodgates will open to many more new appeals backed by the Amptec. It has been a long and winding road with our five appeal hearings this past month. So I would like to just remind you of the basic facts. We have a clean sheet project that follows the Malibu zoning codes and conforms to the LCP without any variances. We are only proposing a 4,200-square-foot house that is set far back from the street, broken up into different volumes, and pushed down into the ground to be least obtrusive. Malibu Park is filled with dozens of big-box homes, ranging from 7,000 square feet to well over 10,000 square feet. Many are way over 30 feet high. There are several large homes in plain view, both in front of our property and behind. This is an infill property in an island of sea, an island in a sea of developed homes. Is the city all of a sudden going to apply different standards to our home after everything around us has already been built? At the end of the day, we hope that you rely on your own professionals at the city. Courtney's determinations are unwavering and conclusive. Tyler's planning staff report methodically explains why our project conforms to all the Malibu standards and why the appellant's claims do not hold any water. We look forward to this ending on a positive note tonight, so that we can all move on with our lives. Thank you. And I'd like to note that our biologist, Eta Three, is available for questions during your deliberations, and I also remain available. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public speakers, the applicant and the appellant.
Before you close the hearing, can we ask some questions of the applicant and the appellant?
It's up to the mayor, if you want to keep it brief. If it's just about the procedural process...
Yeah, so just clarifying questions, so please keep them minimal.
I have three questions for Mr. Kent.
Could you come up to the podium, please?
And I have a question for Frank Angel afterwards.
Does anyone else have questions that they want to ask?
I have a question I want to ask Tyler when we get through the questions.
One of the speakers said that you had people cut down a tree when you first acquired the property. Is that accurate or inaccurate?
It was, no, it's not accurate. It wasn't a tree. And we were doing brush clearing when I purchased the property.
Okay, so you didn't cut down any trees?
Did not cut down any trees. There were...
It's fine.
A few very small toyon bushes that inadvertently got cut because there was all kinds of dead brush.
And did you pay to replace three of the bushes?
Yes.
Okay. The other question I have for you is, have you previously represented in connection with any development that you were doing in Malibu that it was going to be your home?
I've built...
Yes or no? Have you ever represented in the past that a home you were building in Malibu was going to be your home?
Yes, three times.
Thank you.
I lived in my last home for 13 years in Malibu.
How about the other two? And the other two as well?
The other two were about four years, I believe. The last one was 13.
Okay. So you built them, and then you sold each of them?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Frank Angel.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant? Okay. Thank you. All right.
So Frank, I'll preface my question with an explanation of why I'm asking. I asked Tyler, when we first began this adventure, whether if there was Asha, it meant that the project was dead because it required a variance, and he answered yes, which I believe was, I agreed with that. I was seeking confirmation. You're asking tonight that we approve this with a condition. Now, you're a lawyer. If we accept your client's assertion that there's Asha, it seems to me we have to deny the project. If we don't accept that there's Asha, then you're not entitled to any conditions. So can you square that?
Again, we're not asking you...
Speaking to the members.
I know you're not asking us to stop the project.
We're not asking to stop the project. We're only asking that you add a condition that...
Is there Asha? In your view, is there Asha?
Yes.
Then how can we approve the project with a condition?
You make it better. You increase the buffer. If you approve it with the condition that the ADU be removed, you're then having a buffer, which I agree, is not even the full 100 buffer, and that is our compromise, but that got rejected by the staff.
Hold on. So you're saying that if it removed the way you're asking, it would no longer be within the Asha buffer and would not require a variance?
For us.
Okay.
We would not oppose it.
That's all I need to know.
If the staff requires it, or the council requires it.
Frank, I just wanted an answer to my question. I didn't want an argument.
As long as it's east of the access road.
Thank you.
We're happy with that.
If you want to be able to be asked questions in the future, you should just stick to answering it and not make an argument, because I won't ask you questions if you continue to do that. And I'm trying to help you make your case. We're not. But thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor, could I ask Tyler just a clarifying question?
If you're going to ask, we can close the public hearing.
Okay. I'm sorry. Yes. The public hearing is now closed.
Tyler, just a clarifying question. I realize that the Phillipsons have got a, I call it, contingency withdrawal of their appeal. But I was surprised to see the two-foot lowering. I wasn't aware of that. Did that now take away the requirement for a site plan review?
No, it did not.
So it's still got the 1.9 feet?
Went from 22 feet to 20 feet on that side of the, for the house.
So it's still two feet to higher?
Two feet above 18.
Right. That's all I needed to know. One answer would have led to more questions, but you answered my question. Thank you.
I have a question. Okay. How big is this house? Just because I've heard so many different statistics.
Yeah. So the house is 4,270 square feet with a 750-square-foot attached garage. There's also, and I'm sorry because there's multiple reports, I believe a 900-square-foot basement. Is that correct? So that's just the house. 4,270 for livable area for the home, 750 for the attached three-car garage, and then a 900-square-foot basement for just the single-family home. There's a second, what comprises total development square footage is all of the development. So there's also a 900-square-foot detached second unit, ADU, and a 500-square-foot detached accessory garage for that ADU, and a 432-square-foot detached yoga studio. So total, the 1,000 square feet, if you want me to come into complete detail, just let me know if you need me to stop. The 1,000 square feet for the basement is exempt from total development square footage. So their proposed total development square footage is 6,852 square feet.
Thank you. I have another one.
Okay. For staff?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Just for clarity. Does this break any codes? Is this all within our LCP? I know we've heard from both sides over and over and over again, but one more time, this is...
Project was heavily reviewed by all the professionals. It meets all of the requirements of the LCP and the MMC. There's a site plan review, which is a discretionary request for height above 18 feet. That's a very common ask for these type of projects.
Thank you.
I have a question of staff, a question of council, in a statement before we get into the deliberation. Tyler?
Well, at first, I can ask a question before we go. So I just wanted to ask the other council members. Do we want to take each appeal individually? And should we start with appellant one or appellant two? The Phillipsons or the Ericksons?
If the appeal for the Phillipsons is withdrawn, then why would we consider it? I thought it's withdrawn.
Yeah. And the question I have of Trevor is going to provide me with clarity as to hell. I wouldn't answer your question.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead.
But first, I just want to ask Tyler a quick question, I think. Joe Drummond showed us a picture and said there were two different places in which the height was substantially greater than what you've assessed. Can you just explain why that's wrong?
Sure. I don't remember exactly what she said, but the height of the structure on one side, and maybe I can pull up a visual if it helps.
I think she was measuring from the lowest elevation to the highest elevation on the single-family residence and the yoga studio, total 34 feet.
Yeah. So that's just not how height is measured. Height is measured from nearest adjacent grade, and I can show you a definition in our LCP if you'd like. But essentially, what you measure from each point of the building, from each gradient around the structure, so at all points, it must be, you know, because they're applying for a site plan review, must be less than 24 feet. So on the backside, which is the Phillipson side, the grade is higher. And so it is only between 12 to 15 feet on that side. On the other side, because he has a cut into the hill to create his garage, that is measuring, was measuring at 22 feet, has now been proposed to be reduced to 20 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, I'm sorry, I was just going to say, the ADU was also mentioned.
Yes.
That...
The ADU has a similar kind of scenario. It's a sloping hillside, just consistently sloping. And so it has a similar feature where on one side, it's less than 18 feet. That would be the side facing the east. And then on the west side, it is cut into the slope, very similar to the single-family home, and it's a 21-foot-tall structure on that side.
And how is that possible if we've got a code that requires 16 feet?
So, very good question, and thank you for bringing that up. This project was deemed complete well before the new ADU law came into effect. And so, I don't want to use the term grandfathered in, but they are allowed to, they were allowed to proceed with the rules that were in place prior to this council adopting the ADU law, which changed it to 16 feet.
Thank you.
Okay. Trevor. This is a little complex, but I'd like you to answer this question. If the council were to deny appeal one, just on the ground that the appeal is not sufficient...
This is the Phillipson appeal?
Oh, I'm sorry. Deny appeal two. No, I thought the other direction. Deny the Asha appeal.
Okay.
And accept that the other appeal is moot, because it's been withdrawn, without saying anything about it at all. Not adopt a resolution, just vote to deny the one appeal that's... And accept that the other appeal is moot because it's been withdrawn, without saying anything about it at all. Not adopt a resolution, just vote to deny the one appeal that's pending. I believe, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, at that point, the planning commission resolution would stand, and if the planning staff is comfortable that the change that's been proposed by way of a compromise is insubstant, whatever the words are, they can approve the plan without it going to the planning commission. Is that all accurate? And we don't have to adopt a resolution making any findings?
We do need to make, the decision the council makes needs to be made on written findings. That's required by our code.
Can we simply make the findings to deny the ESHA appeal without making the affirmative findings to grant the project?
So if you make, if you have a written resolution or written, that would deny the ESHA appeal, I think the issue would be that the other appeal is only withdrawn if this council is imposing the condition that was requested.
No, we wouldn't. If I understand it, we would not, if the appeal, suppose there were just the one appeal, just the Phillipsons' appeal.
Okay.
And in the course of the appeal, they reached this agreement, and withdrew the appeal, and the planning staff is comfortable that they have the ability to implement that without us approving it at all. It's based on the planning commission's approval. There's no appeal. There's a minor change. We wouldn't need to do anything, right?
Is your proposal saying if you deny the Erickson appeal, the ESHA appeal, and then your argument is that the other appeal is withdrawn, and then as a result, the planning commission resolution would stand, but it could be adjusted through substantial conformance, is
Correct, without going back to the planning commission.
It would be able, there would be the ability, I believe staff has determined, that this would fit within substantial conformance, that they would be able to move, approve moving the project farther towards the center as proposed.
Okay, so the council understands why I'm asking this question. I have substantial concerns about some of the findings we're required to make to adopt the resolution. It's not my business if we're not adopting a resolution, whether I have those concerns or not, because the planning commission has already adopted that resolution. So, as I said, if the only appeal before us were the Phillipsons' appeal, and it were withdrawn, we would not be doing anything. At that point, the planning commission decision would stand. There would be an agreement with the Phillipsons. It would result in these minor changes, and the planning department would allow the project to go forward. If we have to make affirmative findings on the Phillipsons' appeal, I'm going to have a lot to talk about because I think there are substantial problems. So Trevor, just for clarity then, if the council comes to the decision to deny the ESHA appeal, and we accept the withdrawal of the other appeal, can we just not adopt a resolution with respect to approving the project so much as just denying the appeal?
I don't think we could. I think we do need to make, because this is a de novo appeal, so that we would need to, the council would need to make the findings for the project. If you're going to deny the project, then you're, at the same time, you're going to have to make the findings for approval if you're going to deny the Erickson, the Erickson appeal.
I'm really trying to find a way to streamline this, but it sounds like you're telling me that we can't?
Yeah, and I also think that the, that the other problem would be the Phillipsons' agreement is conditioned upon a condition being imposed. If it was just sent back and you just hadn't, if you're relying on the planning commission approval, yes, it could move, but it wouldn't be required to move those seven feet, so I don't think that would, you would have to get them to agree here to actually withdraw the appeal and allow that to happen.
I find it inconceivable that the Kents and the Phillipsons wouldn't agree that if the appeal is withdrawn, full stop, conditioned on this change being made, and the planning department can implement it, that anybody would care whether the city council or the planning commission's resolution is the one that grants the CDP. Is that right? If we could hear from the parties, I think that would be
Still that we have the problem with the Ericksons' appeal because it's not withdrawn, and that we do need to, you need to get the findings to deny it and also to approve the project. You do need to make the affirmative findings to approve it.
All right. I actually disagree that we need to make findings to approve anything if we make findings to deny the appeal, but you're the final word on that, I guess.
Okay, so back to my original question. Which appeal do we want to hear, make a determination on first? The Phillipsons or the Ericksons?
I think it's the Ericksons, because if we resolve that, many other things seem to fall into, in the line. I realize we've got comments from Trevor, but maybe we can work something out if the Ericksons, the Erickson appeal is done.
Okay.
I'm fine with doing the Erickson appeal first. I have general comments that will apply to the whole project in general, but we can take the Erickson appeal first as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Formative? Okay. So my thought was is that we just take each of the bases of the appeals. To my reading, there's three. That the ADU is cited too close to the property line if ESHA is determined to be there. So
Take that? I'll go first?
Sure, let's go first, Steve.
Okay. One, I know Mr. Kent. I knew him when I was on the planning commission. I think he's an excellent architect, and I think he's an honest gentleman. I also know Don Navarro, Don Erickson. I've known her since 2000, someplace in there. I also think she's an honest person, and I think she is a lifelong environmentalist, and I don't believe she's making stuff up. Now, I know Mr. Kent went to Richard Malika when he bought the property and asked if there was any ESHA on the property, and Richard pulled out the map and said, there's no mapped ESHA, and that was correct. What Richard didn't tell Mr. Kent was they don't have to have it on the map to make it an ESHA, and should have been told that. Subsequent to that, in 2021, Don Erickson got an email from the city staff that read, "I will recalculate the side yard setback from the ESHA." So the city staff acknowledged, or at least indicated, there was an ESHA on that property. And that led us to the biologist debate we had a couple meetings ago, you know, issue is or issue ain't an ESHA. And it's interesting, in the planning commission meeting, Skyler made an interesting comment and asked an interesting question. He said if there was ESHA somewhere down the line, that would be a game changer, and he asked the city biologist if there was any ESHA listed beyond that property, and the city biologist says, I don't know. I didn't do the investigation, so I can't tell you. Now, either Skyler or the city biologist could have taken a look, because it took me about five minutes to identify the fact that across from the high school, there's a 100-yard setback from the ESHA, which is part of the same stream, the secondary stream that comes off of the stream across from Mr. Kent's property. Now, I know Richard, in planning commission meeting, came up with an argument of why the city staff wrote an email to Ms. Erickson saying there was an ESHA there, and if anybody, I listened to his argument. If anybody liked to debate whether that argument was sufficient, I'm more than happy to do that. I don't think it was.
Steve, could you please repeat that last statement?
There was an argument made when the planning commission asked, how come the city staff wrote an, wrote the email to the Ms. Erickson saying, "I recalculate the side yard setback from the ESHA," indicating they thought there was an ESHA there. Richard gave an argument that I just didn't think was very solid as to why he did that. So I think, you know, seems to be a lot of evidence there's an ESHA floating around out there someplace. The second thing, and I'll turn this over to somebody else for a while, is that, you know, one of the conditions we have is this the least environmentally destructive or least environmentally impactful development. The best I can tell, and I mean, Don Navarro brought it up in the last meeting, there's a fence all around this property, and I don't think it's got breaks in it, and I think that's not allowed, and if that is, that kicks it out of being the most environmentally sensitive property. Can't do that. So that's what I've learned so far. Let me turn it over to somebody else, and I'll come back later on.
Who would like to go next?
I'll go very briefly. Helen asked a question of Tyler, whether this project was completely consistent with the code. Tyler didn't quite say yes. He gave a very appropriate technical answer. That's the question for us. Is this compliant with the code? There are two ways, at least, in which it might not be compliant with the code. One is if there is ESHA. That's a fact determinate, well, it's a mixed question of fact and law that we have to decide based, we have to apply the law to what we decide to be the facts, and if we conclude there is an ESHA, then it's not compliant with the code because it goes into the ESHA setback. Tyler didn't expressly say that, but he also didn't deny it, didn't reject that, because that's, that's an undeniably accurate statement. The other question we have to address to determine whether it's compliant with the code, actually, there's a few more, but the other one, the other big one is, is it consistent with neighborhood character? That's an undefined term in our code. We have to figure out what the definition, we have to determine what we believe the proper definition of that term is, and we have to determine whether the facts of this project satisfy that legal definition.
Can I clarify on that one?
Let me just finish my sentence, and then yes. If we determine that it doesn't satisfy neighborhood character, or that it hasn't been proven to satisfy neighborhood character, then it doesn't comply with the code, because we have to make a finding that it doesn't, it's not inconsistent with neighborhood character. Mary Ann, yes?
Is it neighborhood character or neighborhood standards?
It's neighborhood character.
The site plan review says neighborhood standards.
It's neighborhood character. I'll explain that in detail.
Neighborhood standards is a separate provision of the code, Tyler, if you want to talk about it, but
Sure.
It's basically, that's a provision that allows you to measure how different setbacks are in different, in a particular neighborhood, and give you almost a buy right.
When we, when we get to that appeal, there is going to be an education that everyone has been confusing the concept of neighborhood standard. With neighborhood character, they are not the same. They are two separate standards in our code, and a lot of people talked about, we need to follow the code. I completely agree. We need to not be making up things based on our personal predilections. We need to follow our code. And our code has a specific provision called neighborhood character, and by virtue of the fact that we also have a specific provision called neighborhood standard, which has a very fine definition, that cannot be the definition for neighborhood character, or else there'd be no point in having two different standards.
I was just clarifying if neighborhood character was applicable or not.
It's not. It's neighborhood character.
The neighborhood standards is not being applied, and this is not applied for. It's, neighborhood character is a finding required for a site plan review that the project is consistent with the neighborhood character.
When I read the code, it only spoke about neighborhood standard. That's why I'm clarifying.
Can I, can I clarify? So Mayor and council, tonight, because there's a site plan review involved, you do have to make a finding that it meets the neighborhood character.
Okay.
Much more subjective. Neighborhood standards, as they were saying, is a separate discretionary request where basically the development item they're going after has to be within the average of the neighborhood. That's different than neighborhood character finding.
LIP Section 3.27.5.
Okay.
Okay, so those were the comments I just wanted to make to start, which is that we do have multiple questions that we have to answer to determine whether this is compliant with the code. So many speakers said tonight, this complies with the code, so why are you considering this? Well, you know, why do we bother having appeals? That's why. We, this project has not been approved. That'll come out at the end of tonight, whether it's approved or not approved. A lower body gave its approval, subject to this body, if there was an appeal taken, giving its approval. And by the way, although this is not technically approval, appealable to the Coastal Commission, there's a contention that there's an ESHA, so even if we conclude that there's no ESHA, the applicant, the appellant may be able to persuade the Coastal Commission that there is an ESHA and persuade them to accept an appeal, which they have the power to do. But we don't, people are what's called pulling the cat out of the hat, or putting, I'm sorry, putting the cat in the hat. This appeal is about whether this project should be approved. This appeal is about whether the code is satisfied. Everyone who came in here and told us, why are you doing this? It's obviously satisfies everything in the code, and that the project's already been approved. Those things are both not, well, it's not been approved, and it may or may not satisfy the code. That's what we have to determine.
Doug?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to ask a couple questions. Let me phrase it this way. I believe we ought to take this in sections. Let's discuss ESHA first. I think a lot pivots on whether or not there's an ESHA, and I think we could go to things like neighborhood standard, neighborhood character, but I'd like to bring the two, I'd like to bring two of the biologists on to ask a few questions, and let's, let's hear from them. We've only gotten conversations one way. We've only heard from the people.
I, Madam Mayor, I would say, if you, we have the city's biologists on staff. If you want to ask her questions, I would not recommend reopening the public hearing to have the biologists that are retained by the other parties.
Okay, even though the one biologist for the applicant, pardon, the appellate, was able to make a presentation, the applicant's biologist is not able to counter any of those?
Well, they had the opportunity. Everyone had the opportunity to speak, and they presented what they wanted to present.
I just want to clarify that. All right. Tyler, can we get the city's biologist on?
Yes, she should be ready to go.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi. Courtney, you and I have never met, and I've got some questions for you, and to some degree, I'm going to have to merge what I would have asked the applicant's biologist in with yours, so if you could give me a little leeway there, and if you need to answer the questions as you think maybe the applicant's biologist would state it if you don't agree with it. First off, I want to make sure everybody understands my position on this. The city's biologist doesn't have a dog in the fight on either side. As I see you, you're the, you're the moderator, mediator, the ham between the two slices of bread, whatever you want to call it. You don't have a particular position to take on this except just the facts, and I kind of go back to the old Dragnet Show, just the facts, ma'am. So if I could, can you just describe again for me what the key elements are of an ESHA area? Because I know there's like a checklist or so. If you could just reiterate those for me.
Yeah, of course. Hold on one moment. So, an ESHA area or habitat areas that shall be considered to be ESHA is any habitat area that is rare or especially valuable from a local, regional, or statewide basis. Any habitat area that contributes to the viability of plant or animal species that are designated or are candidates for listing as rare, threatened, or endangered under state or federal law. Any habitat area that contributes to the viability of species that are designated, quote, "fully protected" or, quote, "species of special concern" under state law regulations. Any habitat area that contributes to the viability of species for which there is other compelling evidence of rarity, for example, plant species eligible for state listing, 1B or 2. Any designated area of special biological significance or marine-protected area, and the last is streams, and that is from LIP Chapter 4.3.
Can you repeat the one about the streams?
It just says streams.
Say it again, please?
Streams.
Just a stream?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Not to cut this short, but of the first, I'll call it one, two, three, four, probably five items, any of those applied? Do we have any endangered species or anything like that here that we need to take into consideration?
None that I observed during my two site visits.
Okay, and were there non-native plants, non, are there invasive plants, things like that in there that would be consistent with just anywhere in Malibu?
That is what I observed during my site visits, yes. I did observe native plants, but it was of my professional opinion that they appeared to be planted. So the native plants that I observed, like I said, appeared to be planted, saplings, you know, new, and I did observe many non-native species. I'd have to pull up my old memo, the first memo from I don't remember when, to give you specific non-native plant species that I observed.
So it seems like, and correct me if I'm wrong, the whole definition of whether we have ESHA here is whether or not there's a stream. Is that correct?
That appears to be the argument, yes, that is being had.
Okay, I've read the opinions from the applicant's two biologists. I've seen the I've seen the, is it geographer or, I guess it's geographer, that the appellant brought in. And the three biologists, and you're certified for that, and the other two are as well, didn't seem to indicate there was a stream. And I honestly felt like the appellant's biologist was parsing his words to come up with a stream. Can you give me, in your professional opinion, what the characteristics are that make this a stream or don't make this a stream?
Yeah, so we have to go strictly by the LIP's definition of a stream, which is a topographic feature that at least periodically conveys water through a bed or channel having banks. And then it continues saying this includes watercourses having a surface or subsurface flow that supports or has supported riparian vegetation. That's from the LIP.
Okay, so when you listen to some of the, or you look at some of the presentations on the stream, it honestly looks like there's a culvert at Cutford and a culvert at Harvester. And then it sort of disappears. Yes, there's plants down there, but there's always plants along a fence line. Can you tell me how this applies to the stream at the high school? And I think you said in one of your writings that there's another stream about 900 feet to the east. So this sort of bifurcates the two known ESHA areas. So are they related or not?
Yeah, so the high school stream is very well studied. It needed to have a biological assessment as well. We were involved in many meetings with Army Corps of Engineers, the Department of Fish and Wildlife, and the Regional Water Quality Control Board. So it was found, it also required a jurisdictional delineation for that project to move forward with the high school. So it's a very well-studied stream and well-established that it is jurisdictional for all three of those regulatory bodies. And then the stream, you said 900 feet to the east. I'm not sure if I do recall that one, if it, if it has us. The one, the one at the, at the high school is very well studied. So is there a street that you can tell me for the one that's 900 feet east? Or maybe a little bit more information on that?
It's, it's me trying to take it from my notes. This thing's gone, if, if everybody thinks it's gone on a long time for them, it's gone on a long time for me.
Yeah.
The stream at the high school, is it connected at all to the water flow from this area on Harvester?
So that one, it continues up, this is difficult, I'm sure, without a visual, but it continues up, and it has been determined that there is some beginning of it off of Clover Heights Avenue. Clover Heights is that, you know, cul-de-sac. And so there is some water that appears there. And then at the, the intersection of Harvester and Clover Heights, there is a culvert where the water comes through and actually an active, I believe, approved public works project there. So I am not aware of this, the water that is, that is, you know, part of this discussion tonight at 30053 Harvester being a part of the high school stream. It was not, you know, discussed in the many biological reports for the high school. So I am not aware of those systems being connected.
Okay, because I know there's been quite a number of discussions about something at the high school. But in my, looking at the maps, I couldn't see where there was any water connected to where the high school is. And now that you brought up the other agencies, like the Corps of Engineers and so forth, did they ever bring it up as being part of the, I'll call it the Harvester stream that we're talking about tonight versus the high school stream? No one's ever connected the two together, correct?
Not that I'm aware. Not that I'm aware.
All right. Let's see, let me look at my notes here for just a second. I believe in your memo of the March 26th, you made the comment, you made the comment, the lack of typical ESHA plants, but rather just non-native invasive plants. Would that preclude this from being considered ESHA if there weren't any ESHA-style plants in the area?
I was simply trying to make the argument that I did not see naturally existing riparian vegetation, which was, which is part of the LIP's definition of a stream. So, and I think I discussed later in that memo that the native plants that I did see, that you may categorize as riparian plants, appear to be planted. And that, again, that's my professional opinion.
Okay. One other thing, when I walked this site with the appellant, it looked like people had done brush clearing in what I would consider to be the ESHA area. It looked like it was mowed or weed whacked. Yeah, there were some plants there. And by the way, everything, see if you concur in this, all the plants in there looked very small. They didn't appear to be a robust, longstanding group of plants there. But they had weed whacked it right up to the edges of some of the bushes and brush within what I would consider to be the ESHA area. Does that preclude it from being ESHA, or is that allowed to be done?
So, no. So if it is determined to be a stream and therefore ESHA, you are not allowed to disturb that stream or ESHA nor 100 feet from it. And fuel modification is considered development. And that is how, you know, it has, it has been considered development. So no, it, I know that there's a section in the LUP that states that, you know, established fuel modification areas preclude ESHA from being ESHA, but that does not apply when you're discussing streams. So, and that is very explicit in the LUP. So fuel modification would not be allowed, nor would fencing, you know, anything else.
So it's got a fence, and at least when I was there back in April, it looked like it had some weed whacking done to it on the Erickson's side. And obviously, Mr. Kent had said he did brush clearance when he first brought the property. So it almost seems like everybody has weed whacked this area thinking it wasn't ESHA, and now all of a sudden it is. Did you see, when you looked at it a year ago, did you see any signs of brush clearing on the Erickson's side of the fence?
Um, no, I didn't, you know, to be quite frank, I didn't really look for that. I was tromping through very tall invasive weeds. So I, you know, I was a mess to counter hours that day. So no, I, I remember the vegetation being very high when I went there for a site visit. But I was on the Kent's property, not the Erickson's property. And I did not look for brush clearance on the Erickson's side. I did not look for that.
All right. Let's see if I have anything else here before I turn it over to someone else. The appellant's geologist or geographer, do you have anything to say about the comments or the opinions he came up with on that being a stream?
No, not only just to reaffirm what I've been saying since, I believe, 2024, that my opinion has not changed. I did review his memo, and I believe I issued a memo after that just stating that I did not change my opinion of the, the system.
Yeah, I think I have a copy of your memo right after that came out, that was produced. And you, they said the same thing you said in your memo. Okay, that's all the questions I had for the city's biologist.
I have questions. Go ahead, Councilmember Conrad.
Thank you. Hi, Courtney.
Hi.
All right. So does ESHA need to be mapped to be ESHA?
No, that is outlined in the LIP that it does not have to be mapped.
Okay. Can a stream be a stream without being ESHA?
Well, inherently with LIP 4.3, streams are ESHA. So if it is determined to be a stream, it is therefore determined to be ESHA because it's, it's per LIP 4.3. Does that, is that what you're asking?
Kind of, I guess. I mean, I just know on my property, I have many, many streams. Because when it rains, it makes different areas of runoff. And I'm trying to understand, you know, if, when I was reading Zev Yaroslavsky's chapter on ESHA, because this is kind of off the, you know, Peter Douglas from the Coastal Commission wanted to make all of the mountains ESHA. And he had said, well, if we make everything ESHA, nothing is ESHA. So I'm trying to really just understand how we've gotten here. Because if this is a new ESHA that has never been identified before, and you're our, you know, city biologist, which I respect completely, and you've been out to the site three times, I heard?
Twice, yeah.
Twice? And did you walk the ESHA, the area that's deemed to be ESHA? Or did you just see it from the Kent's property?
No, I walked the Kent's property, and then I later went back and was invited to the Erickson's property and walked and discussed this with the Erickson's as well. So I walked it on both properties.
Okay, thank you very much.
And Courtney, this is Mary Ann. So with walking in on the Kent's side and walking in on the Erickson's side, nothing that you observed on either of those changed your observation or determination that ESHA exists? Does not exist?
No.
So in your professional experience, ESHA does not exist on either line, regardless of which side you're on?
Correct.
Thank you.
While Courtney's still on the line. So some of this will be repetitive, but I just want to make sure it's clear. One, tell me if I'm wrong, whether or not this is mapped as ESHA doesn't, isn't a factor in deciding whether it is, correct?
Correct.
Okay. If there's a stream, it's ESHA?
Correct.
Okay. Tyler, can you tell me what pages of the report are Courtney's memos?
Just give me a second. It'll be, it's a very extensive report, so.
Can I ask while he's trying to find that? One more question, because it's, it's, so I'm just still curious how you found it not to be ESHA, if it has all of those characteristics?
Yeah, so I believe I described it in my March memo. So I did visit during March, which is generally considered the rainy season, or at least we usually have rain during that time. I did not, so again, I'm, sorry, let me back up. So the definition of a stream is a topographic feature that at least periodically conveys water through a bed or channel having banks. This includes watercourses having a surface or subsurface flow that supports or has supported riparian vegetation. So let me just take that piece by piece. So I did not see water at the time. Again, I visited in March, when it's generally the rainy season. I did not observe a bed or channel having banks. It did not have surface flow at the time. Whether or not it has subsurface flow has not been investigated by anyone. And I certainly was not tasked with finding out if it has subsurface flow. So it could have subsurface flow. I, I have no idea. And, and then that supports or has supported riparian vegetation. I did not observe any riparian vegetation that was naturally existing. So again, I observed what I believe to be planted, native plants that, you know, could be considered, some could be considered riparian. But primarily, it was dominated by invasive, non-native plants. So that is how I came to that determination.
Thank you very much.
Tyler, can you tell me what page the report is?
The first memo I found was page 525, ZBID. It's the March 26th.
Okay, and actually, I think what Courtney was just saying is helpful. So, well, let's, let's start. Where in this report is your opinion about whether this is or is not a stream?
Um, I'm trying to find it. You mean, is there an explicit statement that says that it's not a stream?
Yes.
I believe I say, let's see, it says, there is no indication of a stream northwest of, oh, no, that's northwest of Culver. Southeast of Harvester. I believe that I don't explicitly say that it's not a stream. I just give reasons as to why I do not believe it's a stream.
You did a second report, right? Tyler, what page is that on?
Sorry, I thought these were lined up. Let me just, let me find it for you. Give me one sec. I apologize.
While Tyler's looking for that. Courtney? This isn't a criticism. I'm just trying to engage in a conversation here. You're telling us that there is vegetation which could be considered riparian, but you can, but it, but it appeared to you to be planted, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, but whether it's planted or not might go to the question of whether it's ESHA other than for purposes of a stream. But the definition of stream is supports or can support riparian habitat, right? Vegetation?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So if somebody plants riparian vegetation and it is then supported by the stream, by the water that's there, isn't that evidence that whatever that is, whether it's a stream or not a stream, it does support riparian vegetation?
Yeah, I mean, in my professional opinion, it's a low point between two high points, and that's where the water's going to go, and where there is water, the plants will grow.
So, so you did observe that this area that the appellant calls a stream and the applicant calls water supports riparian vegetation, whether it was recently planted or not, right?
Yeah, I did not list the riparian plants, so I don't exactly remember what was there other than black walnut, oh, no, valley oaks, it looks like, as well, which are not native to the Santa Monica Mountains.
Tyler, do we have the second report?
Yeah, 556. August 6, 2024.
Courtney, do you express an opinion in the second report that this is not a stream?
I can read it and see if I do. I have not looked at these in a while. It looks like at the end I say, the area in question has no discernible features that would qualify it as being a stream and/or ESHA.
Can you tell me what page of the report that is? Or it's a one-page report?
It's one-page report. It's in the stream and ESHA determination.
The area in question remains discernible features that would qualify. I'm sorry, could you read the words again that you're, you're saying?
The area in question has no discernible features, i.e. a definable bed or bank that would qualify it as being a stream and/or ESHA. That's from the memo.
What page is that?
I don't have the packet, so I apologize. I don't know. It's a one-page memo.
Tyler, can you give me the corresponding page?
So if this is the second memo, this is on page 556.
Yeah.
Is it August 6?
August 6. Is it in the stream and ESHA paragraph, Courtney?
Yes, it is. It's the last sentence.
The area in question remains discernible features that would qualify it as being a stream and therefore ESHA.
Yeah, that's what I'm reading as well, but that's not what Courtney Joyce read just now. So Courtney, what are you reading from?
Uh-oh. Looks like maybe my memo wasn't published correctly. I'm reading my memo from August 6.
All right, well, it's not the one that's in the record. You talked about not doing some sort of a study and not being tasked to do it. Would that study provide evidence one way or the other as to whether this is a stream?
So you, so correct, so I did not do a formal biological assessment. I was not asked to do a I was not asked to do a formal jurisdictional delineation and neither was I asked to do a tree survey. So I was asked to visit the site and, and give an opinion, of course, on, on what I saw. However, if a jurisdictional delineation is, is used similar, like the comparison that I can make is for the high school stream. So you can determine if a system is jurisdictional and there are different parameters that are used to determine if it's jurisdictional and whether or not the Department of Fish and Wildlife, Army Corps of Engineers, or the Regional Water Quality Control Board have jurisdiction over this system. So that would potentially just give you information on whether or not they find, like they take jurisdiction over the system, which may lend more information as to subsurface flow and there would be a soil sample taken, et cetera. So, so it could lend more information.
Okay. So now Doug earlier said, you know, you're the one person here that's neutral, that doesn't have a dog in the fight. And Doug may remember that when he first was elected, he and I were going to propose a code provision that called for the city's expert or expert hired by the city to perform the initial testing to determine the existence of various things that need to be proven, one of which would be Esha or no Esha. Because the way it is now, tell me if I'm wrong, the applicant hires an expert to perform that study and then the city reviews the study by the applicant and confirms whether it makes sense or not. Isn't that the way it works?
Yes, I have to rely on the information given to me unless I then go to the site like this project.
Right, but you didn't go to the site and perform the studies you would have performed if you were being tasked with the determination of whether there was a stream, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now, the other thing Doug said was that he listened to Dr. Longcor.
Courtney, this is Doug Stewart again. Did you do subsequent to the initial study what you would have done had you done it de novo?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
In other words, did you follow up on your subsequent visits? You've been there now two or three times, two times, and you've written several memos on this. Did those constitute what you would have done had you done it from scratch or not?
No, I, I would have been much more, and it's similar to what the applicant's biologist and the appellant's biologist turned in. Biological assessments are very in-depth and there's a lot of information collected especially, and same with jurisdictional delineations.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now Doug also said that Dr. Longcor seemed to be parsing his words. As a lawyer, I understand that. I think that that makes perfect sense because what we're doing here is parsing a code. The, so the, the test for stream is supports or has supported riparian vegetation, right?
Yes.
Okay. And it can be ephemeral, is that right?
Periodically conveying water?
Yes.
Yes, not, sorry, not everybody knows.
Period, yeah, well, okay, but that's, so Dr. Longcor said that this was a first-order ephemeral stream. Do you have within your records, like a year's worth of data or maybe even two years' worth of data as to how often water traverses this channel?
No, no, I do not.
Do you have any records of the velocity or the depth of the water?
No, I do not.
Okay. You stated that one of the reasons that you believed it was not, wait, somebody stated, maybe it wasn't you, that one of the reasons it was not a stream was because it was straight and streams don't tend to be straight. Was that you or someone else?
I am not sure. It could have been me, I'm not denying it, I'd have to look, it was in a memo or?
It, it may have been someone else, but Dr. Longcor explained that first-order ephemeral streams, which are the top of a watershed, typically are straight. Do you agree or disagree with that statement?
Yeah, I can agree with that statement.
Okay. So I'm going to do what you don't do when you're cross-examining somebody and want to try to prove a point, because I'm not trying to prove a point here, I'll ask you. Given that you didn't do the study that you would do if you were determining whether it was a stream, a stream is defined as something that supports or has supported riparian vegetation and you observed that there was some vegetation here which could be characterized as riparian vegetation. And all the things you've heard from all the people who testified, are you providing an opinion that this is not a stream or are you, what are, what exactly are you doing? Are you, are you telling us that it's your professional opinion, this is not a stream?
Yes, based on the time that I had, the site visits that I, you know, that I wrote in the memos, the site visits that I, that I conducted and the time that I had to spend on this, that is my professional opinion.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, one, one other question. Courtney, I don't know if your, if your job deals with this or if this is outside yours, but there's an assertion here also that there's a wildlife corridor. Is that something that, as the city biologist, you deal with or is that something somebody else does?
I mean, specifically at the city, that would fall under my, I guess, realm of expertise.
There is something called a wildlife corridor in our code, right?
Um, I mean, I'm not sure, I have not come, well, as it pertains to fencing?
Yes.
Yes, as it pertains to fencing, yes. That is what comes off the top of my head immediately.
Well, actually, it's not as it pertains to fencing, there's a concept called a wildlife corridor and then there are certain rules, one of which has to do with fencing, right?
Okay, I, yeah, I'd have to look specifically into it.
Okay. And if it's a, if there is a wildlife corridor, there can't be non-permeable fencing, right?
It has to be split rail. Yeah, it has to allow for the free movement of wildlife.
Okay. Have you, are you offering any opinion in this matter as to whether there is or is not a wildlife corridor?
I was not asked to provide an opinion. I can just tell you that wildlife corridors are areas that connect to open spaces generally. So there are two, you know, maybe parks or open spaces or, you know, national parks or something like that. And it is a, an area that wildlife traverses to get from one open space to the next, so it provides connectivity in the area.
Do they have, how far apart or how close do they have to be to constitute a wildlife corridor?
There, that is not, you know, well-defined in my, to my knowledge.
The mountains are a wildlife area, right? I mean, they're building a corridor for them across the highway.
The mountains of, the Santa Monica Mountains?
Yeah.
Yes, it's an open space, yes.
And the ocean, the beach, is that a wildlife area or no?
Um, certain wildlife would use the beach, certainly, yeah, the, certain wildlife. You know, I don't have any data on this, so I couldn't tell you specifically, but raccoons, I've seen possums on, on the beach when it's associated with, you know, when, like, for example, you're not going to see them on Zuma, but if there was, you know, say, an opening or maybe the mouth-
You won't find them on Zuma because all the people chase them away, right?
Exactly. Coyotes I've seen on beaches before.
Courtney, can I answer, ask a question? Regardless if there's a wildlife corridor or not, it wouldn't be inconsistent for us to require a different type of fencing than a closed fence. We could have fencing that is consistent with that of a wildlife corridor as a condition.
I think I'm getting what you're saying, that this, that, that it should have fencing that is?
If they choose to have fencing, could we require that it be consistent with wildlife corridor fencing regardless of whether or not it's determined it exists?
Yes.
In the abundance of caution to make sure animals can move from one location to another?
A hundred percent.
So Bruce, do you have more questions along those lines or are we getting close to?
No, I'm done.
Okay.
I'm finished.
So do we want to take a straw poll of whether or not we feel that there is Esha or not Esha? Are we ready to conclude? Any other items or do we need a break before we can make that? Okay. So we've had a request for a restroom break.
Quick straw poll, I mean, it's just a que, it's not binding, it's just a question of where we're leaning.
Okay. Bruce, would you like to lead us off?
Actually, no, I'd like to see what others have to say first.
I have to go to the bathroom, so that's where I'm leaving.
She has to go to the bathroom.
Okay, we're going to take a break and we'll be back in, at 8:10.
Okay. And please, everyone, do not speak with the council, the, the public hearing has been concluded.
The public hearing has been concluded.
And I have been told that Mayor Protem Stuart Silverstein would like to begin.
All right, so if you still want me to go first, I'm happy to. But first of all, I think that, pardon my French, and I'm not gonna say the explicit word, but I think this whole process is effed up. I really do. I cannot make heads or tails of whether there is or is not a stream there based on what I've heard so far, because I'm hearing a lot of conclusions without facts. So I'm still on the fence.
I feel similar. Are we doing the straw poll?
Yes.
Am I drawing you where I'm going? Okay, I would like to ask somebody who's a professional that might know the answer, because I don't know it, but if I were to plant riparian plants on my property and then near a water, I guess a traversing water type feature, would that then become Esha? I don't know if Courtney's still around, but I don't even know if she'd have a, I don't know.
Tyler, can you take that, or is that Courtney?
I would probably defer to Courtney. I mean, you know, if you create an Esha through, you know, your own accord, you know, it doesn't always historically have protections. It's not the same for Esha, I should say, as it is for the native tree protection, let's say. That's very clear, that the tree, let's say the sycamore or the toyon in this case, needs to be native in order for it to get those protections. That's very clear in the code. Now, Courtney read that the Esha may support riparian vegetation, so there's a little bit of gray there, that if, an Esha can perhaps be created, but, you know, Esches historically are native and natural to that habitat.
Can I? Well, I'd like to-
From a legal standpoint, I don't, I understand what Tyler just said. There either is or there is not a stream.
Well-
On anyone's property.
I was going to ask, where's the Coastal Commission come down on this? If somebody plants native trees, do they determine that that now is an Esha just because they are native trees?
We'd have to look at the record. I, we asked the, actually have, I think it was this project, have some correspondence from the coastal analysts who told us to, because of these conflicting reports, told us to rely on the site-specific biological studies that were done, and that's what we did, because that's what our LCP requires.
Okay, thank you.
We're conflating different concepts, though. There's six different ways in which property can be Esha. Let's focus only on the one that we're dealing with here, which is a stream. There either is or is not a stream on anyone's property. Whether you plant riparian vegetation or not, there either is or is not a stream. If you plant riparian vegetation and the water supports it, you've now created evidence that there was a stream, or is a stream. It's not the fact that you've planted the riparian vegetation that makes it a stream. That's a form of evidence that the body of water could be classified as a stream, because it's now supported the riparian vegetation that wasn't there.
But-
If there's no riparian vegetation there, it can be a stream nonetheless, but then you have hypothetical analysis of whether it could or could not support riparian vegetation that's not there. But you can have a stream that doesn't have any riparian vegetation. It can be a stream, and it can support riparian vegetation, but it doesn't have any.
But just as you can plant plants, you can also alter land so that it creates a more viable water course.
That was a different question. Alan's question was whether you could cause it to become a stream by planting plants. You're now saying, can you cause it to be a stream by digging a channel? I suspect the answer to that is no.
Well, if I could-
Tyler, is that correct? You can't manufacture a stream.
Our biologist is still here. Do we mind, can we ask her? And I can chime in. Courtney, what I say, was that accurate?
Yeah, what you said previously, as it pertains to Esha.
Yeah, and then can you further answer Mayor Protem's question?
As it pertains to creating streams by digging channels?
Yes, right.
Right, yeah, I would imagine that that would not create streams, just digging channels.
Can I ask, thank you, can I ask then, if I have a water divot, covert, traveling area that once in a while carries water when it rains, and I like toyons and other features, and I planted them, am I now planting an Esha? Am I now creating an Esha?
Gosh, I don't know. I mean, I, it's, that's very, like, site-specific, so maybe over time you could create Esha-like, you know, qualities. Yeah, it just depends on how it acts over time.
Mayor, can I?
Yes.
A couple of points here. First off, to go back to the idea about manufacturing Esha, I could imagine that you could take your lawn and where it's sloped down, and you're irrigating your lawn, and you could plant some riparian plants in there, and suddenly they would grow. But going back to Bruce's point, very much of a legal position of prove me something, but I don't think you can prove it. I think that this is one of those things, like, can you ever prove that there wasn't a conspiracy? Well, the answer is you can't. But I think this comes back to the famous Potter Stewart, and I always say, no relation, who said, you know, "I know it when I see it." And I think that's where we are with the biologist. The biologist has looked, there's three of them, and said, "It ain't there." So I think, in the absence of being able to prove that it's there, it has to depend on the biologist to make the statement.
I'll tell you, in a court of law, what the biologist has told us tonight and the conclusion that she's expressed would never be admissible, based on what she's told us.
Okay, but does it influence your determination as to whether or not this is an Esha, yes or no?
No, admissible evidence clearly does not influence my determination. I ignore it.
So we have a professional, we have three professional biologists who said there's no Esha, but that's not definitive?
I, no, that's not, that's your words, not mine.
I'm asking for your words. Is this an Esha, in your opinion, yes or no?
I already stated that I am still on the fence. I can't figure it out.
Okay, well, we've got to move on, so we're going to have-
We're having a straw vote. We haven't heard other people's votes yet.
Okay. Councilmember Euring?
I saw the video of the water coming down. I saw the presentation from the law court where he had the banks on either side of what the stream was. I saw the evidence he presented that said that the water flow coming down the stream had moved some of the debris along the bottom. I think it's a stream.
Okay. Councilmember Conrad?
I don't think it's Esha.
Okay.
Do I have to give a reason?
Only if you want to.
Thanks.
Councilmember Stewart?
I don't believe it's Esha, and in fact, I don't believe that Mrs. Erickson, when she was weed whacking, had thought it was Esha either. So I'll leave it at that.
What evidence is there that Ms. Erickson weed-whacked anything? Because the city biologist told us she was on the other property and that she didn't know whether it was weed-whacking.
I saw it.
You on her property?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor Protem Silverstein, Esha, yes or no?
This is the third time I'm being asked this question now, so I'll give you the same answer.
This is the straw vote, so I just want to be clear. Yes or no? It is or it isn't? We're doing the straw vote, and we're going in order, the other council members have answered.
Okay, I was asked this question five minutes ago. I answered it. I was asked again another minute or two ago. I answered it. I'll give you the same answer. I can't figure it out one way or the other, based on what I've heard so far.
Okay.
Do you want me to say it again?
It's ridiculous. Let the guy pass his thing. You're just going in circles here.
Okay, my determination is not an Esha. So we have three to one to no answer. Okay, we're gonna go on to appeal. Basis for appeal number two, there was a lack of a fair and impartial hearing. Sir, any-
Hold on, Councilmember Stewart, you said that you saw the weed-whacking. Is that influencing your decision? Because I don't remember that being disclosed.
It's just another factor in my, I was there, I saw the site.
You should, okay, we should allow the appellant to address that fact, since it wasn't disclosed beforehand.
Thank you, Trevor. I wanted to make that point too, but I decided not to.
Okay, so-
That's why we shouldn't be doing site visits.
A brief minute, Councilmember Stewart, could you explain when you saw the weed-whacking occur and where it was located?
Say it again.
When you saw, you said you saw her conducting weed-whacking in the area?
No, I didn't see it, I didn't see it being conducted. I saw the effects of it. All the plants had been cut down very short.
Okay, and when did you, when did you see this?
On the site visit with the appellant.
With the appellant, okay. Mayor, I suggest reopening the public hearing to allow the appellant, Ms. Erickson, to address that.
Is Ms. Erickson here?
No.
So she's not here to answer?
Or her representative.
So Frank Angel? So I have a little bit of a clarification. Going back to the first public comment, didn't Ms. Navarro speak as a public speaker and not a member of the team, or was I misremembering that?
Does Ms. Erickson have a representative here? Mr. Angel, do you represent Ms. Erickson? Do you want to respond? Would you like a minute to respond to Councilmember Stewart's statement about the, that he saw evidence of weed-whacking when he was on-site with the appellant? The appellant, not the applicant?
I am not qualified to say whether she weed-whacked or not, but I'm being told that that is not the case. Her daughter is in that position. If the question is, has she conducted fuel modification in the Esha, I could not tell you the answer. All I can tell you is what, when I walked in, was the biologist, what we saw, and we took the pictures, and he identified plants that were laid before-
Okay, Frank?
And a few that were planted.
Okay, so you can either answer the question, yes or no?
Yeah.
No, you cannot answer the question. Okay. Fuel modification has occurred on the property, correct?
Can I just mention that due to the Woolsey fire, we had a significant amount of cleanup, so there has been alteration that might appear.
Okay, thank you.
You want to close the public hearing?
Again, we're reclosing the public hearing. So the basis for the second point that the Ericksons made was that there was lack of a fair or impartial hearing, that the fact that Planning Commissioner Dennis Smith did not go to the site as requested.
We don't need to do this piece of the appeal because we're having a de novo hearing, and it doesn't really matter whether it was fair or unfair. Isn't that right, Trevor?
Yeah, I mean, this is a de novo hearing, so anything, any issues would be cured. If you want to go and discuss those individual allegations, you could, but there is a drafted resolution that would address the basis that were asserted, and there is a de novo hearing, and everyone's being provided notice and an opportunity to be heard. So any issue with the planning commission would be cured by this hearing right here.
Okay, so is it time to vote on this appeal, whether or not it's approved or tonight?
Well, you have a straw poll about one of the appeals. If you want to address the other one and then make an overall motion, until you're ready to make a final, all-encompassing motion to act on both appeals and the approval or denial of the project, we may recommendation. But you have a straw poll on this one, so you may want to see what the temperature of the council is on the other appeal.
Before we do that, could I ask if we take a straw poll on whether they should be required to have a split rail fence? Because that is also part of this appeal. It may not be designated as a specific line item, but it was in the description of why the appeal was being taken.
Well, I think that's one of the conditions we can add to it when somebody makes a motion.
I'm asking where our inclination is now, to see whether we need to have a discussion of that or not, because I'm inclined to accept that there's a wildlife corridor here and that that should be a condition.
I'm not inclined to accept there's a wildlife corridor, but I'm inclined to add the condition that a split rail fence be installed as part of the project, if they choose to have a fence.
What would be our legal basis for doing that if there's not a wildlife corridor?
Staff, do you have an opinion on this, please?
Sure, that condition is in this resolution before you already. Whenever you have the potential to enclose an acre of land, then we put that in there. It was put in this resolution before you tonight.
Regardless if there's a wildlife corridor or not, just the site being larger, an acre or larger, has that condition?
Correct.
Okay.
So they're not gonna have that tall?
They're required to, if they enclose more than, let me read it to you. If they enclose more, I think it might be two acres. Let me just make sure I have that right. The condition that's in the resolution is necessary boundary fencing of a single area exceeding half an acre, half an acre, sorry, shall be of open rail design and wood rail at the top instead of wire, be less than 40 inches high, and have a space greater than 14 inches between the ground and the bottom post or wire. A split rail design that blends in with the natural environment is preferred. So they will be required to have this type of fencing planned.
There can also be a fence within that fence, though, that can be non-permeable, right?
If they don't enclose, let's say they don't enclose a half an acre. Let's say it's open, then you don't need it, because it's open on other sides. This is only if you're, if you imagine a square property that's half an acre and you completely enclose it, the split rail fencing allows the wildlife to trespass through. So if it's open on one of those sides, you don't necessarily need this.
Thank you. Sounds like that's taken care of then.
Okay. So back to my original question. Are we ready to vote on appeal number one, or do we want to go with appeal number one and two? Do we need any discussion on appeal number two?
Let's make sure we know which appeal you're talking about.
So appeal one is the Erickson one, appeal two is the Phillipsens.
Appeal number two is the Phillipsens, and if that is the one that, if the council is voting to include the specified condition, then they are withdrawing that appeal.
But we still need to make all the conditions as to whether or not we approve this project?
Yeah, so if the council finds that the, if the council makes the findings and wants to add that condition, then that would be all that would be needed to resolve that appeal. We would have to alter the resolution, I believe, to specify that the Phillipsens appeal has been withdrawn according to the agreement, but that would be the change that would be required.
So our steps now is to review the coastal development permit with the site plan review, and make a determination if we agree that this is approved.
Sure, you're welcome to make a motion, an overall motion at this point in time. You're welcome to go through any questions about any of the required findings or any issues anybody has with it. It's up to the council how it wants to go through.
Okay. Is anybody ready to make a motion on staff recommendation?
I'll make a motion on the staff recommendations. Can we do that separate from the findings? Is that what you're saying?
No, the staff recommendation includes all the draft findings in the resolution.
Oh, okay.
The resolution includes the findings required to approve the project and to deny both appeals. The request from the Kents and the Phillipsens from their agreement would be that you would move staff recommendation with the following changes, I believe. One would be to include the condition that Tyler put on the board earlier, and then to modify the resolution to specify that the Phillipsens' appeal has been withdrawn pursuant to the agreement submitted to the city dated May 21, 2025.
I'm willing to put the motion forward, but I don't, somebody's gonna have to write it out for me, I'll be candid with you.
Do we have a second for the motion?
For discussion purposes, I'm happy to second the motion.
I'll second it without discussion purposes.
Either way, we're gonna have discussion.
Does anyone have any questions or anything that they want to add? Councilmember Conrad?
Well, so we're on appeal number, the Phillipsens?
We're on the staff recommendation to approve the project, denying both appeals with the added condition of the agreement between the Phillipsens and the Kents with regards to making the modification of the side yard setback and approving the project in substantial conformance by the planning director.
We're voting on that now. We're ready.
If you have any comments, you're welcome to make them at this time.
Not right now.
Okay. Councilmember Euring?
Mary Ann, you said it much better than Trevor's, even if it applied, I think.
Well, I think the issue on the Phillipsens, the question we have to at least consider is, does this meet neighborhood character standards, okay? And, you know, although it's not really written out and coded that much, I ran into this an awful lot when I was on the planning commission. I had a chance to think about it. Now, I agree that neighborhood character involves, you know, the right architecture, the right building materials, so it fits in. The other thing, in my opinion, what the other thing neighborhood character requires is that the new development doesn't do anything to negatively impact the development that's already there. I think if it does, that impacts neighborhood character, and I think that may be going on in the Phillipsen property. So that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, I mean, this is a de novo hearing, so anything, any issues would be cured. If you want to go and discuss those individual allegations, you could. But there is a draft resolution that would address the basis that were asserted, and there is a de novo hearing, and everyone's being provided notice and an opportunity to be heard. So any issue with the Planning Commission would be cured by this hearing right here.
Okay, so is it time to vote on this appeal, whether or not it's approved or denied?
Well, you have a straw poll about one of the appeals. If you want to address the other one and then make an overall motion, until you're ready to make a final, all encompassing motion to act on both appeals and the approval or denial of the project, we may recommendation. But you have a straw poll on this one, so you may want to see what the temperature of the council is on the other appeal.
Mary Ann, before we do that, could I ask if we take a straw poll on whether they should be required to have a split rail fence? Because that is also part of this appeal. It may not be designated as a specific line item, but it was in the description of why the appeal was being taken.
Well, I think that's one of the conditions we can add to it when somebody makes a motion.
I'm asking where our inclination is now, to see whether we need to have a discussion of that or not, because I'm inclined to accept that there's a wildlife corridor here and that that should be a condition.
I'm not inclined to accept there's a wildlife corridor, but I'm inclined to add the condition that a split rail fence be installed as part of the project, if they choose to have a fence.
What would be our legal basis for doing that if there's not a wildlife corridor?
Staff, do you have an opinion on this?
Sure, that condition is in this resolution before you already. Whenever you have the potential to enclose an acre of land, then we put that in there. It was put in this resolution before you tonight.
Regardless if there's a wildlife corridor or not, just the site being larger, an acre or larger, has that condition?
Correct.
So they're not going to have that tall?
They're required to, if they enclose more than, let me read it to you. They enclose more, I think it might be two acres. Let me just make sure I have that right. The condition that's in the resolution is necessary boundary fencing of a single area exceeding half an acre, half an acre, sorry, shall be of open rail design and wood rail at the top instead of wire be less than 40 inches high and have a space greater than 14 inches between the ground and the bottom post or wire. A split rail design that blends in with the natural environment is preferred. So they will be required to have this type of fencing plan.
There can also be a fence within that fence, though, that can be non-permeable, right?
If they don't enclose, let's say they don't enclose a half an acre. Let's say it's open, then you don't need it because it's open on other sides. This is only if you imagine a square property that's half an acre and you completely enclose it. This split rail fencing allows the wildlife to trespass through. So if it's open on one of those sides, you don't necessarily need this.
Thank you. Sounds like that's taken care of then.
Okay. So back to my original question. Are we ready to vote on appeal number one? Or do we want to go with appeal number one and two? Do we need any discussion on appeal number two?
Let's make sure we know which appeal you're talking about.
So appeal one is the Erickson one. Appeal two is the Phillipsons.
Appeal number two is Phillipsons. And if that is the one that, if the council is voting to include the specified condition, then they are withdrawing that appeal.
But we still need to make all the conditions as to whether or not we approve this project?
Yeah, so if the council finds that the, if the council makes the findings and wants to add that condition, then that would be all that would be needed to resolve that appeal. We would have to alter the resolution, I believe, to specify that Phillipsons' appeal has been withdrawn according to the agreement, but that would be the change that would be required.
So our steps now is to review the coastal development permit with the site plan review and make determination if we agree that this is approved.
Sure, you're welcome to make a motion, an overall motion at this point in time. You're welcome to go through any questions about any of the required findings or any issues anybody has with it. It's up to the council how it wants to go through.
Okay, is anybody ready to make a motion on staff recommendation?
I'll make a motion on the staff recommendations. Can we do that separate from the findings? Is that what you're saying?
No, the staff recommendation includes all the draft findings in the resolution.
Oh, okay.
The resolution includes the findings required to approve the project and to deny both appeals. The request from the Kent and the Phillipsons from their agreement would be that you would move staff's recommendation with the following changes, I believe. One would be to include the condition that Tyler put on the board earlier, and then to modify the resolution to specify that the Phillipsons' appeal has been withdrawn pursuant to the agreement submitted to the city dated May 21st, 2025.
I'm willing to put the motion forward, but I don't, somebody's going to have to write it out for me, I'll be candid with you.
Do we have a second for the motion?
For discussion purposes, I'm happy to second the motion.
I'll second it without discussion purposes.
Either way, we're going to have discussion.
Does anyone have any questions or anything that they want to add? Councilmember Conrad?
Well, so we're on appeal number, the Phillipsons?
We're on the staff recommendation to approve the project, denying both appeals with the added condition of the agreement between the Phillipsons and the Kents with regards to making the modification of the side yard setback and approving the project in substantial conformance by the planning director.
We're voting on that now. We're ready.
If you have any comments, you're welcome to make them at this time.
Not right now.
Councilmember Yurin?
Mary Ann, you said it much better than Trevor's even been invited, I think.
Well, I think the issue on the Phillipsons, the question we have to at least consider is, does this meet neighborhood character standards? Okay? And, you know, although it's not really written out in code that much, I ran into this an awful lot when I was on the Planning Commission. I had a chance to think about it. Now, I agree that neighborhood character involves, you know, the right architecture, the right building materials, so it fits in. The other thing, in my opinion, what the other thing neighborhood character requires is that the new development doesn't do anything to negatively impact the development that's already there. I think if it does, that impacts neighborhood character, and I think that may be going on in the Phillipson property. So that's where I'm coming from.
But does the additional setback help mitigate that impact?
We ought to ask them, their house.
Okay.
Didn't they sign the agreement, though? An agreement that that would? No?
Yeah, they agreed.
They did sign it.
The agreement is, states that they withdraw it if you impose the condition.
But they didn't agree that it doesn't impact the property. I recall everybody saying that.
Yeah, it doesn't matter what, you know, it's for the council to make the findings, not for them to make the findings.
Okay.
So again, I said this earlier, and I was trying to find a way to short circuit this. I accept that the councils, at least by a vote of three to one to one, if not four to one, because I might still join the non-ESHA component, is going to deny the appeal on the ESHA. If at that point we adopt a resolution explaining why we're denying that appeal and consider the other appeal moot, there's no need to do anything further. If we have to adopt a resolution that makes all of the findings that are in this draft resolution, there are two findings I have trouble with. One of the findings is that this is the least environmentally damaging alternative, because whether or not there's ESHA, it's damaging to an area that there's a question of whether it's ESHA, and it could easily be redesigned so as not to be as damaging to that area. And the other question is whether it does impact, whether it's consistent with neighborhood character. And we need to affirmatively find that it's not. And again, if we don't need to make that finding, one way or the other, then, you know, whether I like it or not, whether I think it's consistent with neighborhood character or not consistent with neighborhood character, it goes forward. But if we have to make that finding, we need to discuss why we're making that finding and how we make that finding. And I'm prepared to discuss that, but I'd rather that the result here be, that the motion be amended to deny the ESHA appeal, adopt a resolution making the findings needed to state why that appeal is being denied, and then accept that the other appeal is moot, and that the deal that's been struck can be taken care of by the planning department because it's a de minimis change. Are you willing to accept that as an amendment?
Isn't that what he's got?
No.
No. The agreement we have here is only withdrawing this appeal if this is approved by the city council and is not sent back to the Planning Commission, and that they stated they wanted to have the condition requiring, because there is nothing that would require the project to be set back as requested by the parties together. And we do have an obligation as part of denying the appeal to, you know, make the findings to approve the project.
If the parties to the neighborhood character appeal were to agree right now that it doesn't matter whether we approve it, it's good enough that we simply consider it moot and let the project proceed with this one modification, which the planning department has told us now repeatedly they can implement on their own, can we not then make those findings? Can we just accept that the appeal is withdrawn?
Number one, we need the Phillipsons to state that the appeal is withdrawn. They would need to state that on the record, that they're withdrawing it, period.
No, subject to that change which the planning department will implement.
No, because we need, they have a pending appeal right now. The appeal needs to be resolved, either we're going to grant or deny the appeal. They're only withdrawing it under these circumstances, and in this case, it would be, you'd be waiting for the staff to take a further action, be conditioned upon the staff taking some form of action. So we wouldn't have acted on the appeal because it would still be pending, if you're saying it wouldn't expire until after the project is approved like that. And even if staff approved that change, there would be nothing preventing it from being moved back, the substantial conformance is approved in this location. The Plan Commission plans to approve it in the location where it was originally presented, so there would be no way to prevent them from moving it back.
All right, well, look, if we have to debate whether we can make this finding, I'm prepared to do that. And I think it's important to do it not simply for this appeal, but because we've got a huge portion of this city that's about to undergo an alteration, just like Malibu Park did, and we need to make the rules very clear to ensure that we don't end up with another neighborhood that has no character, as Stacy said. Because I don't believe that the proper neighborhood character analysis has been performed here. And I would like to be able to use this as an opportunity. Look, if we make these findings right now, then the next person that wants to do something that's based on the same kind of study this has done in Big Rock is going to hold this resolution up as precedent and say that the study that was done here is all that's necessary to establish neighborhood character, when in fact it's not. It's a study for neighborhood standards, and I'll explain that later. But what's going to happen is if we adopt that resolution, that resolution then becomes a precedent that the city council looked at this question, heard the arguments, and affirmatively rejected them and decided that this is consistent with neighborhood character. And then the next person's going to do it and hold up that as precedent, and the next person, and eventually Malibu has no character because it's been, because it's written out of the code, and we've been told over and over we should be applying the code. And we were told by Mr., by the appellant here, I'm sorry, the applicant, that it's a subjective standard, it's just a concept. Well, so is the concept of negligence, but that's what courts decide all the time. Those are subjective concepts, and they're very amorphous, but it's a reasonable standard, and neighborhood character is much like that. It's written in our code, it's words we can't ignore. So I'm prepared to discuss that, but I really believe there is a route to getting this done without us having to make that resolution.
Well, the city attorney has disagreed with that. He stated his reason why. I agree that the Phillipsons have only agreed to this condition, provided that this particular condition is included in this resolution, and so we need to go through for this. So we've got a first, we've got a second. Are we prepared to call the question, or do we need further discussion?
I am not prepared to call the question. I think there's going to be discussion, which I've been trying to avoid. If you want to try to call the question and see if there's four votes to do it, then go ahead.
Okay. Do we have four votes to call the question? Councilmember Conrad?
This is to vote without discussion?
This is just to have the vote, similar to the county committee.
Yes. So it's whether to end debate, I believe, is what's on the floor. Is that correct?
Correct.
Where we don't discuss and we just go to a vote?
Yes.
I'm not ready to vote on that. I feel stupid. I mean, I, yeah.
Okay. So now we'll proceed with discussion on the item. Councilmember Stewart, do you have anything that you would like to discuss?
Is this on the neighborhood character?
This is on anything with regards to approving the motion that was made.
No, I have nothing to say at this point.
I guess I have a question. So what I just thought was we were coming to the meeting with a agreement, and with that agreement, I was all yay. But now we are talking about conditions and discussions and debates, and I want to understand, was there an agreement? Because then I heard the appellant didn't seem very happy with where they came to a compromise or a conclusion, an agreement. So are we talking about the agreement for the appellant?
We're talking about the application, whether or not we're going to adopt staff's recommendation to deny both appeals and add the condition that, of the Phillipsons with the relocation of the structure for 20 feet from the property line, an additional seven feet than what was required by the code.
Gotcha. That was clear. Thank you.
Do you have any questions or points that you would like to make? Councilmember Yurin, do you have any questions or points you would like to make?
I think the discussion of neighborhood character, and look, we've kept it around here, and nobody knows what it means, right? We haven't really got a good definition, so I think even putting a little meat on that bone would be helpful for none of us, but for moving forward.
I would like to, I mean, I wish it wasn't in this setting at this 8:45 time to talk about neighborhood character, but I do think that it needs to be discussed because I keep hearing, and if this is going to be the next four years of my life, I better get a good grasp of what neighborhood character is if we're going to keep kind of saying.
I don't disagree with you. I think this is not the correct place, that if we're going to have a discussion on neighborhood character versus neighborhood standards, that that should be on another date and time because it's a generality, it's not with regards to this particular project. And this keeps happening over and over again, where we discuss broad terms instead of dealing with the application that's in front of us. So.
Do we adjournize that discussion for another meeting? How does that?
We have to make a finding, an affirmative finding, that this project is not inconsistent with neighborhood character. So to the extent that we are not all in agreement as to what that means, we need to have a conversation about what that means so that we can figure out whether we're in agreement to make that finding. So this is absolutely the right time.
Is your argument going to be in a succinct and brief manner, or are we looking at an hour and a half of discussion?
I think you're somewhere in between those bookends.
Well, let me say this about neighborhood character. Malibu is not, Malibu is custom homes. There is no such thing as production homes here. There's no such thing as a subdivision builder. It's, you know, each one is its own look. And just as we were talking about rebuilding, you're going to have homes that used to be Spanish, and now they're going to be modern. You've got some that are going to be Mediterranean. It's going to have every look possible. So neighborhood character is going to be hard to come up with with custom homes. It's one thing if you were doing production homes. If this was a project somewhere, you'd say this looks consistent with it. And you can spot the outliers. On Harvester, there's one house that you drive by on Harvester on the way to this particular site, and you look at it and go, how'd that one get there? I'm not going to name which one it is, but you look at it and go, that didn't fit. So you know which one that is, and that's going to be the problem with doing this. You know the ones that don't look like the rest of them or don't fit the area. And as I think Tyler said, it's a very subjective standard, and I've seen that in the Planning Commission. It's a great way to weasel out of, and I'm going to use that phrase right, weasel out of having to make a hard decision, say, well, it doesn't fit the neighborhood character. Well, you know, then tell me what you would change to make the neighborhood character, and the answer is, you don't know. So you know the ones that don't look right, but you can't tell me about the ones that do look right, what makes them there. So it's a subjective standard among, in this case, five people, and the Planning Commission to five people. So I think we're going to have a hard time nailing this down in a place that has one custom home after another, and I don't think there's two homes in this city that are exactly alike. So one of the architects in the audience is shaking their head affirmative on that. You're absolutely right. It's impossible to decide what the neighborhood character is in this place. You know the outliers, but I don't think this fits as an outlier.
So I completely agree, I have something I want to say to set this up right, but I completely agree with that. I mean, one of the aspects of neighborhood character is the architectural style and appearance of a house. That's an aspect, and with respect to that aspect, Doug has correctly stated that in many of the neighborhoods, if not all of them, that character, there's no character other than that there's eclectic houses. That makes sense to me. Another aspect of neighborhood character is how much space between the homes. How far back are they? How far forward are they? Not necessarily are they compliant with the code. Everyone has to be compliant with the code unless it's nonconforming, pre-existing nonconforming. But where are they? Have they treated their neighbors well in building new construction throughout the neighborhood? Do we have a neighborhood full of people who could care less about their neighbors and have built homes everywhere they wanted to, so long as it complied with the letter of the technical requirements of the code? Or do we have a neighborhood where people have been more sympathetic to their neighbors and have made sure that when they've built new construction, they've situated it in a place that preserves the best view for everyone? There are all kinds of other characteristics that one might consider as well. It's not simply looking at the house, does that house look like other houses or sufficiently similar to other houses, that it fits with the neighborhood character? There's all kinds of things that could be considered. Maybe they're not. Maybe those aren't part of the analysis. That's the kind of thing that I think we need to figure out and define once and for all. The other thing is, the neighborhood is not the houses that are within the immediate vicinity of the house that's being built. Neighborhood is a very large area that surrounds the house that's being built. The house is in a neighborhood. It's not situated in a tiny vicinity. That's what the neighborhood standards test is in our code. It looks at the houses in the immediate vicinity. But neighborhood character is something different. And our code actually defines a neighborhood, and in Malibu Park, by way of an example, because that's one we're talking about, Malibu Park is from Bush to Trankis, from PCH to whatever it is up top, and the study we have been given is a study of, I don't know, a small fraction or at least a fraction of that neighborhood. We don't know what that entire neighborhood is like. You might know it from driving through it and from seeing it, but record wise, we don't have a record of what this neighborhood is and what this neighborhood's character is. And again, I see where we're going to come out tonight, and I wish we didn't even have to have this conversation tonight because of the deal that's been struck. But if we're going to be operating in a proper legal manner here and making an affirmative finding that the evidence supports the conclusion that this is consistent with neighborhood character, then we need a proper study of the neighborhood, not a study of the 10 houses around this house, and we need to figure out what all the characteristics of the neighborhood are, not just simply what is the architectural style of the homes, and how big are they? And how many stories are they? We need to figure out, are they centrally located on the property? Or do they expand the property, the spans of the property, like this one does? I don't know the answer to that question. Do most people in Malibu Park have homes that span the property? Or do most of them have a home that's centrally located or located to one side? I don't know the answer to that, and there's certainly no record of that. So I want to talk about those kinds of facts, but maybe that engenders some conversation before I do.
Can I just say one thing? Bruce, instead of us having this long conversation, can you give us some indication?
Councilmember, can you speak directly into your microphone, please? Can you speak into your microphone, please?
Where do you think they should be? Because if you talk about, for example, where it's located on the property, that depends on the geography. You know, where is the actual building pad? You look at where my house is built, it's built on the corner of, or the edge of the lot, because the rest of it's a slope. So it just depends on where your house is. And the neighborhood character, when you talk about all custom homes, I don't know what your criteria is going to be. I'd like to know that before we get into a long hour and a half here.
Before I answer that, does anybody else have any comments?
Well, I was just going to add to that. I mean, I'm looking at some of the documentation that was put before us with regards to this. You know, we have homes in this vicinity where setbacks are close to one another in several instances, similar to how this was originally proposed. We have, as Doug was saying, where the building pads are, where views are found. People have maximized and placed their homes to take advantage of the view and/or to be set back from a neighbor, or possibly they're set closer to a neighbor because that just is going to be more beneficial for both neighbors in that case for their views. You know, the sprawling, our code does take care, you know, takes into account some sprawling. Some things are allowed. Some things were built before cityhood and actually kind of influenced how development was created within our zoning ordinance because of some of the things that were done specifically in this neighborhood before the code. And, you know, you can just look that we have things within our code that require making sure that things fit within a certain development area in general. And so you're kind of comparing apples to oranges because this is a pretty well-developed neighborhood and has been for decades. And this happens to be one of the few lots that wasn't ever developed. And there really aren't too many. There's a handful of lots here, and I wonder, just from this aerial picture that I'm looking at, how many of these are just fire rebuilds that didn't get rebuilt yet? They're in the process of doing so, and so they look vacant at this time, but, you know, possibly they had a home before the Woolsey fire. So I think everybody is kind of asking, when you're concerned and you're raising the point of neighborhood character, what features are you looking at to help define that term for you to make you?
Go ahead. No, please add.
Okay. So, this neighborhood character thing is elusive. And, and I think if we're going to cite it, it needs to be defined. I don't think that's going to happen tonight. But I do have some, many notes from the very beginning of this whole process. I think it could be, it gets very convoluted if we go neighborhood to neighborhood. This is not also an architectural, we're not looking at architecture here because we don't have that. We're not a planned community as Westlake Village is. So, I don't think it comes down to style, unless we have an architectural review board, which we're not going to do. I think for me, neighborhood character comes down to the neighbors, really, and what they're doing to the neighbors and the people that have lived here before, what the project does, the consideration that's been put into. I have so many notes. So, I'll just read from some of them because I think they're, I thought maybe with the compromise, which I was happy to hear about, I wouldn't have to do all this, but I guess we do. So, I'll start with, the unneighborliness on both sides of this experience for me was really disturbing. I don't, I'm not proud of the way anybody has treated anybody here. I don't think it's very Malibu. I don't think it's very elegant. I frankly kind of appalled by it. I don't think either parties were, come out squeaky clean here. So, I think that there are other cities, that there are programs that require applicants for new structures or major remodels to engage with neighbors early, not after the fact. I would like to draft staff to, well, we could do that later, but we need to require applicants proposing new structures or remodel of more than 50% of an existing structure to notify and prove that they've engaged neighbors within a 500-foot radius at the beginning of the process and not midway through after expensive plans are drawn. I think we would like, I would like to see a system that fosters respect, communication, collaboration, and compromise from the start, not just technical compliance with the minimum legal requirements. And I think that that is how we protect the Malibu community that we love. I don't know if that's naive of me, but I think it would be nice to avoid three years of people talking, bashing each other on next door or, you know, going down the line of all of this because it's pretty ugly. So, these appeals are pretty heartbreaking and they become emotional. So, however we can figure out, I don't know if it's TDSF. I know that that's a hot topic. I don't know if it's hedges or not, but it's really how I think a project comes into play from the very beginning.
So one of the things I will say is that several years ago, there was a process that when an application for a cost development permit was originally first submitted, that neighbor notification occurred. Unfortunately, what happened was that it takes so long to get through the process that sometimes the neighbors change between when that first application comes in and when it goes to the planning commission. Or people don't look at the items, and so they don't see it until it's actually proposed and the story polls go up. So, I like the sentiment and the, and the idea of trying to engage people early. And I'm not saying that it's not something that couldn't be revisited, but I think it needs refinement because it didn't work out to be a practical option previously. So, absolutely open to thoughts and ideas about how that could maybe be better done in the future, but yeah.
Bruce, do you have a, where your, your thoughts are on neighborhood character that you could engage the rest of us for in the discussion?
Okay, so, my problem is not that I believe this, this, this project does not fit within the neighborhood character. I actually don't know whether, I don't know as an informed decision maker whether it does or it doesn't. I tend to believe it does. I tend to believe it's not a problem, that it's, that it's consistent with the neighborhood character, based on the way neighborhood character ought to be applied. My problem, because I'm a legalist, my problem is I don't have a record from which to make that determination, which is why I was hoping there was a way to not have to make a resolution affirmatively approving of this so much as acknowledging that the appeal's been withdrawn and that the resolution below can stay in place. The reason that I say we don't have an adequate record, and again, this is important to me for future appeals, for future developments, is, I mean, Mary Ann, who knows this code probably better than any of us do, was surprised to understand that there's a neighborhood character requirement involved here.
I just didn't recall.
Every time somebody wants to build more than 18 feet, there's a neighborhood character component in the analysis. The problem has been this city council, the planning commission, and the planning staff have not enforced it. They've ignored it. And that's not a diss to the planning staff, by the way. The planning staff has been given poor direction by this council. And the planning commission's been given poor direction by this council. When I say this council, I don't mean us sitting here. I mean people for the last 20 years. People who, many of whom didn't like the concept of neighborhood character. You hear the animosity, hostility to the concept from a lot of the speakers, especially from the professional speakers, the architects. They don't like this concept because it introduces uncertainty into their projects, and it makes them have to deal with the neighbors. And they don't want to have to do that. They want to be able to design on paper the project that best takes advantage of the property for their client, maximizes the TDSF for their client, so long as their client can afford to build that, that project. And others be damned if they're going to interfere with my project, which complies with the technical requirements of the code. They tell us that all the time. The code is satisfied. But neighborhood character is one of the requirements of the code, and they just ignore that one. They brush it to the side. Again, we heard the applicant tell us, it's just a concept. It's really just words on a page. It doesn't mean anything. Well, it has to mean something or else it wouldn't be in the LIP. And by the way, it's not in the MMC. It's in the LIP. It's, it's kind of introduced into the MMC by the fact that we also have to make a finding under the MMC that the LIP has been satisfied. So, to the extent it's a requirement of the LIP, we have to make that finding for purposes of the MMC as well. And again, I think that, I think that our council has not understood that. I think that our planning commission, I think they actually have understood it, but the majority of them have not cared over the years, and I've watched enough hearings to believe that's the case. And our planning staff does the job they're directed to do by the council and the planning commission, which is disregard the more complicated analysis. So why do I say it's a more complicated analysis? It's very, it's very simple. Section, let me find this. Oh, let me put this up. This is educational as well as anything else. I just want to go through four slides, which are parts of the code, five slides. Do we slide seven? Seven. Thank you. So, this is the municipal code 17.40.04016, and this is the neighborhood standards. Notwithstanding any other provision of this section, upon application pursuant to 1762040, the planning commission may approve or conditionally approve increased height, that means over 18 feet, structure size and/or development area, and/or decreased setbacks where such modifications do not exceed the neighborhood's standards, and where the planning commission affirmatively makes all the findings set forth in 17.62040D. And then go to the next slide. We have a similar requirement, but not identical, in, in the LIP. That's also the neighborhood standards discussion. And if you compare the, what I just read in this one, what I put in italices, italices is, is different. And this requires, because this is the LIP, that there also be findings set forth in section 13.27.5 of the Malibu LIP. So we, if you want to build over 18 feet, you're going to have to satisfy the planning commission and ultimately the, the city council, if there's an appeal, that you've satisfied all of the, you, you can make all the findings in these two sections, one of the municipal code and one of the LIP. Let's go to the next slide. Now, both the code, both the municipal code and the LIP have an identical discussion of what neighborhood standards means. It's, neighborhood standards apply where at least 10 developed lots within a 500-foot radius of the subject site located in the same neighborhood. So there was a neighborhood, and that's not what's at issue in this case, in this matter. And you can, I don't, I don't need to read all this, but this is the definition of neighborhood standards. Go to the next one. Under the municipal code, the findings that have to be made, where there's an additional height required, requested, is, one is that the project is compatible with all other development in the adjacent area in relation to size, bulk, and height. So that's an analysis that's been done. The project will not have significant adverse impact on natural resources and make suitable provisions for the preservation of natural hydrology, native plant materials, wooded areas, et cetera. One could argue that's not been the case here, but let's assume that's satisfied. The project's consistent with the city's general plan, local coastal program, municipal code, and city standards. That's super broad, okay? The gen, that brings in the general plan. The general plan's got all kinds of general discussion. But if that wasn't enough, go to the next one, and this is where, what's important to me. LIP 3.27.5, which is, these findings are required if you want more than 18 feet. And one of those findings is that the project does not adversely affect neighborhood character. This is a finding that needs to be made in addition to neighborhood standards. Okay? So, the test has to be different. It could be, it might be a narrower test, it might be a broader test, but it's got to be something different. And the test that's applied by our staff and the test that is in our record is the neighborhood standards test, which, which again, it didn't surprise me to hear Mary Ann talk about why, use the word neighborhood standards. I think two or three speakers, even Scott talked about neighborhood standards, and he should have been saying neighborhood character because people confuse them. And, and we are up here trying our best to apply our code, which is a legal document, and not doing our best to figure out whether we like a project or don't like a project. You could put a project up that makes me barf, and if you have a legal right to build it, I'm going to vote to let you build it. And you could put a project up that I think is the most beautiful thing I've ever seen, and if you violate the law, I'm not going to vote to approve it. And too often, we get influenced by the non-legal analysis. So, this record does not have a neighborhood standards analysis. I'm sorry, neighborhood, neighborhood character analysis. It's got a neighborhood standards analysis. And I need to make a finding, we need to make a finding, that this satisfies the neighborhood character requirement. And I defy anyone up here to give a logical, cohesive, and lawful explanation of how they can find in a resolution that this satisfies the neighborhood character requirement without a neighborhood character study. It's that simple. And I could say a lot more. I had a lot more written, but it's late, and, and since this appeal is being withdrawn, I don't even understand why we should have to decide this. But if we're going to have to adopt a resolution saying that, I can't in good conscience find that this satisfies the neighborhood character requirement because there's no neighborhood character analysis presented.
Bruce, you brought up a point about having a neighborhood, neighborhood character analysis. You can't do an analysis unless you know what you're analyzing. And it gets back to what's the characteristics of neighborhood character. And, you know, it's, it's amorphous. It's, it's like trying to, trying to make a water balloon. I mean, it just doesn't.
So, so are the words in the code meaningless?
No, I think it's, it gets back to, you know it when you see it.
Councilmember, if you could speak into your microphone.
It's off. I don't like this microphone. You know it when you see it. And, yeah, I, I go back to the comment I made at the beginning. We're not tract homes. We're not production homes. These are custom homes. Everyone is different. And for the most part, the architect or designer is going to be compliant to what looks good in the neighborhood. And for the city council to sit here and say, or the planning commission, this doesn't look good, is a pretty strong step. And I, I don't know that we have much other than a very subjective determination for it. And I understand you're, you're wanting to find, you know, I'll call them factions or components or character or something that you can measure against, but the only thing that we really have that's, that's a metric are neighborhood standards. You know, what's a setback? What's the, what's the TDSF? Those are the standards. The character is very amorphous. So, you know, we can get bogged down in this all, all day. It goes back to the old thing, how many angels can be on the head of a pin? Well, the answer is, nobody knows.
It's, it's not that there's nothing in there. I mean, the, the standard is whether it's to show that it does not negatively affect neighborhood character. And that's not a specifically defined term. We have specifically defined standards. It's not a scientific measurement that you can do. And I believe the way staff, the planning director and Tyler want to talk about historically, is whether it's consistent, you know, with the rest of the neighborhood, whether it would have something that would adversely affect because it's different from the character of the rest of the neighborhood. And if, maybe if you want to expand a little bit more about what it is, but it's not a specifically measurable standard like the neighborhood standards is, which is a much more definable standard. And, but it takes a lot of work to, to go and meet that one.
The, the standard that I am familiar with is very similar to what Councilmember Stuart talked about. It's the sort of, it's the project that has an oddity that's striking. It could be the building itself. It could be color. It could be street lights or some sort of lighting feature. It can be a difference, an extreme difference in landscaping and use of a water feature, or umbrellas, or onyx. It, it, it can draw attention to the eye in such a way to say, that doesn't fit. And to actually do these studies, it's tremendous amount of work because you do have to map the neighborhood. And that is not typically done unless you have a neighborhood that does have some consistent character. So, tract neighborhood, we had neighborhoods in Calabasas that had white picket fences. And somebody came along and brought in a bronze fence, and it was considered heresy. Just the introduction of that feature did not fit neighborhood character. So, it is amorphous, and absent a, a great detail, it, it's a subjective finding.
So, can I?
Tyler.
I just want to speak to the 500, the 500-foot radius, because I think that's what's causing confusion. And yes, it's specifically for neighborhood standards, you have to use the 500-foot radius. And the neighborhood character analysis has been many different ways. If you look at the last 10 CDPs that require one, I'm sure all 10 have a different way of characterizing what they can consider the neighborhood. What we try to do is try to be as objective as possible. And so, a 500-foot radius requirement is not only required in a neighborhood character analysis, it's required in our noticing requirements. So, the code tells us that within 500 feet, there's some relevance to these properties. And so, that's, you know, why 500 was accepted is because the code, more times than not, not just the neighborhood character analysis, but tells us that 500 feet within a certain property has relevance. And that's why, you know, we were able to accept that analysis by the applicant.
Right. So.
If you could. Either of you want to join in?
I go back to my, the, the one thing that I always looked at when I was on the planning commission, does this property have a negative impact on the neighbors? If, if it negatively impacts them, it's impacting neighborhood character. And, and, and I don't have any, I've read some of this, the material that Philson's put out. It blocks some of their views. I don't know what it did to the value of their property. So I just, to me, that would be the determining factor that I would use. It's.
That was my kind of measuring stick for this specific neighborhood character, is what is it doing to directly impact your neighbors' value, quality of life? That's what I always, when I heard neighborhood character, that's kind of where my main, my mind went. Not the character of the neighbors, as Ryan Embry said, because I think that that's not within our guideposts, but rather like what this does to somebody's life. And with the compromise, I thought we were all, you know, I thought we found a compromise. And with the compromise, I thought we were all, you know, I thought we found a compromise.
So I'd like to, we do have quite a bit of business, and I don't want to rush through this, but we do need to come to a conclusion on this, so.
I did have one more question. Sorry, Mayor. My question is, is, has there, from the last meeting that was canceled to today, has there been any neighbors that have said, I'm not in favor of this project within 500 feet? Because I haven't gotten any calls or anything, because I've recused myself in some ways.
Nobody's.
Never refused, just didn't take any calls.
I didn't take any calls. So is anybody now having issue with the project?
Nobody has stated an issue, if I can be completely honest. He ran it by his neighbor to the north, who, you know, he ran by the revised plan with his neighbor to the north, who did send in correspondence, saying that they were okay with the revised project.
That's hopeful, thank you.
Lots of people have problems with this project. We heard from them for over an hour, a couple weeks ago. Just because they're not the appellant, and just because they don't live next door, they have problems with the project. And the neighborhood isn't just the houses that are, again, in the surrounding area of that one house. In fact, if you think about it, every time another house gets built, it extends where that 500 feet is to someone else. Here's my issues. The LIP is, is supposed to be protective. It's not, it's not a, I've said this before, it's not a blueprint for how to do development, it's a bible for protecting our environment. To talk about tract neighborhoods being the ones that you'd be, would be, you'd be concerned about protecting, that's crazy, because nobody who drafted the LIP was worried about a tract neighborhood. The LIP wasn't designed to protect tract neighborhoods, it was designed to protect Malibu. It's our LIP, by the way. It's not, it's not just, just an LIP, it's our LIP, and it was designed for our area, and therefore, since we don't have tract neighborhoods, it clearly wasn't intended to apply to tract neighborhoods.
We do have tract neighborhoods.
We have a few. But it's inconceivable to me that the coastal commission, when they put together the LIP, was thinking about the tract neighborhoods being important enough that they wanted a neighborhood character analysis, but the other, the balance of Malibu, they didn't care about that part of it. The fact that it's a very detailed and very expensive analysis really is what it comes down to. That's what I heard, is it's a detailed and expensive analysis to do it right, and that's why it's not done. But, you know, it's not the city's obligation to do this detailed and expensive analysis, it's the applicant's. And the applicant doesn't have to have a 19-foot, 20-foot, 21-foot home. They're entitled to an 18-foot home. And then you don't have to invoke neighborhood standards, or neighborhood character, or anything. It's truly clean sheets. People keep saying this is clean sheets. This is not clean sheets, this is a discretionary finding. So, the applicant's the master of their design. If they want to take advantage of added height beyond what they're entitled to as a property right, they need to establish why they should get it. And you just heard the planning director say, you need to do it, to do it properly, it's a detailed and expensive analysis. It encompasses the whole neighborhood, not just the homes in the 500-foot area. So, this record doesn't have that analysis. This applicant wants to build more than this, and Lester Tobias captured this in his letters perfectly. That's exactly what he said. If you don't want to be kind to your neighbors, if you don't want to have to worry about all these issues and get dragged through the mud for five years to get your approval, don't ask for more than 18 feet. Build an 18-foot house, and no one can bother you. But this applicant chose to build 20-something feet, which means we have to do this analysis. And this applicant chose to not do a neighborhood character analysis. And this applicant's not stupid, this applicant's experienced, this applicant told us that the statute is just a concept, and it's just words, and it doesn't mean anything. He knows better. But he doesn't want to do that analysis. I don't know if it's just because it's expensive and detailed, or if it's because he's concerned about what it'll show, or he just didn't think about it. You don't get to talk anymore. I'm also, I'm also, and by the way, and while we're talking about that, there is a letter in this record from Fred Gaines threatening litigation against an appellant for taking an appeal and stating that there's an issue here, which I find offensive. And there's been a lot of heavy-handedness in the way the argument's been presented on both sides, as Halen said. It's very disturbing to see. But, but I've said what I have to say. I mean, the bottom line is, we don't have a record upon which we can make a finding that there's a neighborhood char, that this fits with the neighborhood character. I think it does. If I were Potter Stewart, and my, and my only test were whether it looks right to me, it does look right to me. But that's not a legal standard. And by the way, that's not the standard that the court established, that was just a dicta comment that the court, that one justice made. That's not the law. The law actually has a standard. And the standard's not just what it looks obscene. So, this looks good to me, I wish this, I'm sure it's going to get approved right now when we vote, I wish the applicant luck with it, but I think that it's important to understand how this ought to be done going forward, again, because we're going to be having hundreds of new homes built in Malibu. And I guarantee you, other than the like-for-likes, they're going to be over 18 feet. And I guarantee you, other than the like-for-likes, they're going to want to be situated in different places to take the best advantage of their lot, not because it's the only place they can build, because it's the part they want to build on. And there are going to be a lot of neighbors, some of whom don't even have a house anymore, who are going to learn when they go to build their house that someone else bought a property in front of them, and it's going to destroy what they would have had, had they not, had it just been the same as it was. And this is all going to be an avalanche. And we need to make sure that that doesn't happen, and this is just a great opportunity to talk about it.
Well, one of the ways that previous councils have done that has, by suspending the primary view determinations being recorded on properties. And I apologize for not recalling this, was that, has this been done in the Big Rock and the Burn area?
That actually works the opposite way.
No, you can't record a primary view determination in order to impede the ability of somebody to just build a house up to 18 feet. And the primary view determination is for foliage, it's not for a structure. So when a home is proposed at over 18 feet, to a maximum of 24 for a flat roof, or 28 for a pitched roof, there is a visual analysis that is done to determine whether or not it's going to have an impact on somebody's scenic view. So, in this particular case, it's the foliage that is the protection under the PVD, not whether the structure is or not. So, I mean, I'm comfortable with this analysis. I know Malibu Park very well. There are lots of one-story homes, there are lots of two-story homes, there are lots of long skinny homes, there are lots of homes that are compact and in the thing. So I believe that this eclectic neighborhood, this home is consistent with that neighborhood. So I heard you say that you were done. Does anybody else have any additional comments? Are we ready to take a vote on the motion on the floor?
Yes.
Okay. Could you give us a roll call, please?
Do you want to hear the motion first?
Do you want to repeat the motion?
I believe the motion was staff's recommendation, but to add the condition as presented by staff at the beginning of this meeting, that would be consistent with this agreement and require, do you want to just put the condition up, Tyler? So the, correct me if I wrong, but I believe the motion is staff's recommendation, but to add this condition. Is that correct? Who had the motion?
Councilmember Stewart.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And am I recorded as the second, or is Bruce recorded as the second?
Mayor Protem Silverstein is the second.
Okay.
I thought I was overruled on that.
You were the first second. If you withdrew your second, then Mayor Riggins is the second.
Happy to be the second.
Okay. If it's necessary, that's consistent with me, too. So can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Conrad.
Motion, Mayor, first.
This is to.
Staff's recommendation. The motion is staff's recommendation to approve the project, deny the appeals, but approve the condition as specified.
Yes.
Councilmember Euring. Mayor Riggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Silverstein?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Kelsey, how did you determine the order of that?
I'm realizing I did that in reverse, my apologies.
All right, let me see if I can find our script, and let's get back on track with the rest of this meeting. Okay.
Tyler, I just want you, and staff, I want you guys to know, we really appreciate all your effort on this, and thank you for, thank you for your diligence.
Thank you.
Thank you to staff for all your help, and if Courtney, if you're still on there, thank you. Okay, so we're on to item consent calendar? So we will now consider the consent calendar. Remote participants, please raise your hand in Zoom if you would like to speak on the consent calendar. Do we have any remote speakers on the consent calendar?
Ryan.
Okay, we do have one in-person speaker we're going to take first. There are no additional speaker slips to be accepted at this point.
The gentleman in the back said if we hang out here long enough, we can find stuff that we didn't know. This item is about the security funding that was approved, and I'm all for it, armed guards, rather than armed, I'm all for it, up in the hills. This contract, this agenda report was prepared on December 23rd, and it says, at the May 21st meeting, the city council decided to do this. On the 22nd, Intram City Manager approved this, but didn't execute till the 23rd. But in the, in the agenda that's here, she's not city manager. It's not signed. She's not city manager. You haven't appointed her, there's no signature from the mayor. I sent over a letter of how to fix this earlier over the weekend, and then today I walked it in. This is insane. You signed a contract, she signed a contract, or did she? She signed a contract that she wasn't authorized to do, because she's not Intram City Manager. It's right here, it's right there. And if you'd let me do my slide presentation earlier, but I miss it by 50 minutes, the deadline. This is incredible. That means any business that's happened between May 12th and now, that Mrs. Bond has been involved with, is void. It has to be, has to be overturned, this is impossible. Now, I know that the people, the security company will continue to do what they're doing, which they're doing a great job now, I'm sure, I've seen them out there in action, but this is impossible. It's, she does not have the authority to do this. Big screw up.
Okay, we'll go to on Zoom speakers, Ryan?
Yes, I wanted to say, contract will be $300,000. Then the contractor who's been in Malibu years, because all our ex, the other proposal annualized, that's $300,000, especially for this, understand that there's a 10-day.
I think he's breaking up.
Ryan, you don't have a good connection, we're not getting every word. Could you pause the slide, please?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, what are you saying?
We can't hear you.
You're breaking up.
Is it you can't hear me, or you can't?
You're not consistent with your words, we're only getting part of your comments. Your connection does not seem to be good. Are you there? Is he unmuted?
Yes, I, the, for covered six, it's higher than the contractor.
Can we confirm this is on?
Before you.
This is not on IT issue here?
Our system appears to be operating, the speaker is unmuted. He has not been remuted, but his audio is coming in and out.
Are there any other speakers on Zoom?
No.
No.
Okay. We did, we did caution that we are having technical issues on the agenda here, so we can listen to them the best we can.
This isn't a technical issue of us, this is him.
Yeah, it sounds like it's on his end. We don't have any indication that it's a problem here on our end, Parker?
It's probably his bad internet connection.
Okay.
Ryan, you have 2 minutes and 14 seconds left, go ahead. Ryan?
Ryan, you see a pop-up to unmute?
Okay, did, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, imagine that, okay. The contractor that came before you at the last meeting submitted a bid, which was lower in cost, and we found out that annualized, that's $300,000 less than the proposal that you had before you and was initially accepted. Regardless of how clean that was, there is a 10-day cancellation provision, and it's very obvious that the city did not cast a wide net in the RF, well, what should have been a notice inviting bids, this two-step dance of requests for qualifications, and then going over those, and then culling it down, that's a very non-traditional way to be doing this, and letting a contract of this size and scope and cost. So I would suggest that you send that out, or you schedule for a changeover, or as I said before, you bisect the amount of the contract, and hire both contractors, and see which one performs better. It's $300,000 of money wasted, so you could either get more guards from the other firm, or you could save the $300,000. So that's on the first item, and I also put in for 1B5 and 1B6.
Go ahead on those items.
So for item 1B5, this is to let an engineering contract for $683,000 of the city's allocation of Measure M sales tax revenues. This is money from a half-cent sales tax that's supposed to go towards city projects at the city's discretion. In fact, the city maybe hasn't assessed its needs to maybe upgrade signals, or put in traffic cams at the, for instance, city's only signals, which are on Civic Center Way, at Alba Canyon Road, and at Civic Center Way, and Web Way, and at Civic Center Way.
Sorry, Ryan, that's your time. Do we have any additional speakers online?
No, we don't have any.
Okay, that'll close public comments. Would any of the councilmembers like to pull any of the items for further discussion?
Just have a quick question on 1B5, the Kimberly Horn, the crosswalk, the Big Rock, and PCH.
If we could, are there any other items that want to be pulled? Anybody else?
1B12.
1B12?
I want to pull 1B4, and I want to do a small fix on 1B11.
Okay, so 4, 5, 11, and 12. Can I get a motion for the remainder of the?
Motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar, except for 4, what was it?
4, 5, 11, and 12.
4, 5, 11, and 12.
Do we have a second? I'll make a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. So item 4, professional service agreement for pedestrian undercrossing. Travis, or Tatiana? Do you want a staff report, or do you just have a question?
Well, I think a staff report. Well, I think a staff report, let me tell you a reason why I pulled it. This is for the undercrossing at Malibu Seafood, and as I understand, the Caltrans change of, for PCH, they're going to be moving parking on one side of the street or the other. I'm not sure about this particular area. But before we spend a lot of money doing research on it, I was wondering how this fits in with the initial plan for Caltrans for parking, because if nobody's parking on one side of the road, then why, why have a undercrossing to take them to the other side?
And I have additional questions as well. Would you like them now, or after your answer to?
You can, you can ask your question, please.
Because it partially has to do with that. Why are we paying for this? Are we paying for this?
Measure M.
It's Measure M.
Measure M. Do we, the study was done in 2015?
Correct.
Yeah. And I'm just curious as to like, who's going to maintain this underpass once it's done, because we historically don't maintain underpasses well? Is that in Malibu's jurisdiction, or will that be in Caltrans? Caltrans. So when it becomes flooded or muddy, and there's debris, and pedestrians can't go under and use it, it becomes kind of null and void, right? Like, is there a schedule in which they're going to maintain it, or?
Once the project is, well, can I ask, answering the first question first? Yes, I understand there is projects, there is a PCH improvement projects that are done, designed by Caltrans. But this project has been identified by Pacific Coast Highway Safety Study, and it's been in the books for a number of years. And there are still destinations. There is a Malibu Seafood that's on one side of PCH. There is, there is a coral beach that's on another side of PCH. There is also access to the trailhead. So there's still high pedestrian traffic and need and access on both sides of PCH. And this is safety project, so that's been analyzed, and the need is still there, even with improvements that Caltrans is doing. In terms of the project, once it's constructed, it will be transferred to Caltrans, because it's in, Caltrans is in the state right away, completely.
Thank you. I was there today. I do think that we need to have that crossing regardless of parking on either side. The Sarah Wan parking lot's beautiful, but to get to the beach, you have to cross the street. So it makes sense to me. Do we know how long like traffic will be impacted for this?
This contract is for design, so we will have, once the design is done, or at least preliminary, we can give better answer on that, because we don't know in terms of construction, traffic control. We do not know at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. My only concern about this is, this is from 2015. I know that study well, but it's now 10 years old, and Caltrans is doing this revision. I think one of the conditions, if we, if we go ahead with this, and I'll make a motion to approve it, is that before we get too far into it, we coordinate with the Caltrans new plan, which is in draft form. I mean, I've got a copy of it, but I didn't take the time to go back and look and see what they were doing right here, see if it's still warranted with that new plan. And don't forget, there's also a corral underpass being put in right now, too. And granted, nobody's going to walk all the way down to the one end or the other. I understand that. But there are, there's an underpass right there, and going in. So let's make sure that this is really going to be needed before we spend too much money on it. Okay?
Thank you for that comment, absolutely.
I'll make a, with that comment and your strategy, I'll make a motion to approve it, as presented with that one caveat.
And do you guys come back once the study is done, and then we get to vote on it again? Or is this it?
We will come back to the city council with construction.
Like a timeline, and how much construction will be, because we've had the corral underpass, I guess it's a trout bridge, for years being under construction. So I would like to know more detail with the, I guess, holds up, holdups for that area.
Yes, with the construction contract, at that point, we can give more updates on that.
Thank you.
I believe there were a certain amount of public hearings that were outlined in the contract to be had, correct?
Correct.
So do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Okay, 1B5.
1B5, I pulled that one. And just when I read this, we're, design, Kimberly-Horn is going to design services to design a crosswalk. They're not building it, they're just designing it, right? They're getting $300,000 to do that? That's a pretty good deal, I would think. I mean, I don't know what the complexity is. I mean, I read that, and I said, you know, if I bought a six-pack of beer and got robbed together and some paper, we could probably design the same before we finished the six-pack.
It's two crosswalks. It's Big Rock and the other one.
There are two intersections that are in close proximity to each other, and that's, that creates certain, certain safety concerns. That's why that project is designing, looking at two intersections.
There's two complexities involved in that to justify the price. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Okay.
And that second, the 20326, is that approximately in the vicinity of the former moon shadows?
And I'm still wondering why we're paying for this when it's Caltrans? Why, and they have all of these master plans and feasibility studies.
Again, it's in the 2015 study, safety study. It was identified as a location for safety improvements, similar to a lot of the other improvements that we've done along PCH. We do the research and the studying on it.
The city of Malibu does the research and the studying, and then we pay for that, and then they pay for the construction. Is that right? No, we pay for the construction.
Maybe you could give a little bit more detail on the funding that we get from Measure M, Measure R, these different funding sources that pay for these things, and how allocations are done through transportation and such, just for an education in general for the council and for the public.
There is a half-cent sales tax from, from the county, that cities get allocation, that's annual allocation, and Metro identifies the, the city identified the project, and Metro select the projects to be funded by this, if, if there is analysis. In such case, there is this PCH safety study was performed, and that project was identified as one of the priority project, and that's how they can select that get funded.
So these monies are specifically collected in order to help fund different transportation needs or improvements within jurisdictions?
Correct. There are two types of projects. There is infrastructure projects and safety projects.
Doesn't come out of the Malibu kitty. Great, thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
A second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. I think number 11 was next.
Oh, this is, this is me. It's just a small fix. In your discussion, you've got, the city of Malibu opposes Assembly Bill AB470. This is Senate Bill 79, and AB470 was a phone bill. So you just need to make it consistent, so that it looks like we knew what we were doing.
It says it right in the letter, if not in the article.
I know, just in discussion, small fix.
Councilmember Stewart, we hear the correction that's needed, and we'll make that change.
Yeah, just small correction.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Oh, hold on a second. In your letter, now that I look at the letter, again, it says, "City of Malibu opposes for Senate Bill 79." You're right, never mind. You're right, got it.
Two of a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed? Great. And number 12. Susan needs a second. Do you want a staff report, or questions?
No, it's not necessary to have a staff report. I just want to say that, first of all, KTLA did a story this morning about our hiring security. It was, it was very good, and they included comments that Ryan made here, which were very well taken at the time he made them. Look, we gave Candace the discretion to decide who to enter into this contract with. We trusted her to make the judgment. She actually explained, I assume she explained to everybody. She explained, I know she explained to me after she made the decision. I assume she had phone calls with everyone to explain it, what her reasoning was. It made complete sense to me. She didn't even need to explain it, because I trusted her judgment. So I think it was a good decision. And the objection that she's not our interim city manager is just silly. She is our interim city manager. We're going to ratify that tonight, just in case there's any argument to the contrary. But we all voted in a proper meeting to approve her contract, and we actually, I think, can make her our city manager without a contract. But we voted to have, on the contract, and she is our city manager, and it, there's just, it's just, it's just a silly objection.
By the way.
I'm moved to approve this.
Yeah, by the way, it was on May 19th that she was appointed city manager. We're doing a belts and suspenders tonight. This contract was signed on 22nd, so she was, been a city manager for three days, and it was signed.
Right.
You made a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve this.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Okay, hey, we got through consent calendar. Yay. So we're on to item 3, commission committee and city manager updates. Do we have any commission or committee updates?
No, you don't have any commission or committee updates.
City manager, would you like to please give us an update?
Thank you very much, Mayor Riggins, Mayor Pro Tim Silverstein, and honorable council members, our Malibu community members, and to our fantastic staff. I'm excited to announce that Malibu's main artery is reopened and flowing. We reopened PCH this past Friday, and the fact that it went smoothly through the weekend is a true testament to the strong teamwork by numerous partners that were involved. I'd like to recognize the great work of our staff members. Thank you for being here. Susan Duenez and her team in public safety, Rob Devoe, and the Public Works team that worked with Caltrans, our Lost Hills Sheriff Department, and our Captain Carr and a VOP team, LA Sheriff's Department, Sheriff Luna, and Commander Sito, who are very responsive to our requests for additional resources, Governor Newsom's office, CHP officers, Supervisor Lindsey Horvath's office, the National Guard, Caltrans, and CalOES. And last but not least, our new friends and partners at Covered Six, private security firm, Michael Grant and team did an excellent job, and please forgive me if I've overlooked anyone. It took a big village, but we did it. We did it. And with minimal incidents and substantial deployment of law enforcement resources, which kept our communities and our visitors safe, and we hope to continue this cooperation throughout the summer. We have had positive feedback from community members and local businesses, and we hope that this continues throughout the summer. Just an update on, be really quick. Thank you so much. Also, from our community services director, Kristin Riego, she tells us about the Siwong art exhibition, which is here. It's fantastic. Please tell all friends and neighbors to come see it. It's incredible. And the Malibu Film Society screening, which is sponsored by the city of Malibu, is the screening of From Darkness to Light on Friday, May 30th at 7:30 PM. And free admission to the first 50 Malibu residents. So that's something to keep in mind. Now, moving on to Yolanda Bundy, who gives us a report that PCH is open, which we, and the debris removal neighborhood progress has been swift. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has completed debris removal on 222 parcels along PCH. In the Big Rock neighborhood, the Army Corps of Engineers has cleared 72% of Optin properties. 50% have already received final sign-off from the county. In Los Flores Canyon, 59% of Optin properties are cleared, with 23% receiving their final sign-off. In the Fire Rebuild Center, over 267 rebuilding families have visited the rebuild center, where staff have assisted them with their questions and concerns. The planning department has approved 17 rebuild applications and is currently reviewing 30 additional applications. This evening, we will have a fire flow update provided by our LA County Deputy Fire Chief, Nick DiVali. So please, we welcome you.
Okay. Thank you, city manager, council. Thanks for the opportunity for our update from the fire department. We've been working pretty hard with many, many people over the last couple months, I think, as everybody's aware, especially city staff, the 3rd District, and Water District 29, as the main players. So one of the questions that kept coming up is the use of water tanks. And the fire department is vetted through all that process, and we've come to the conclusion that we are absolutely supportive of the use of water tanks where necessary for people to meet the minimum fire flows. So we'll have a packet that will be presented to the applicants that want to use that option, and that'll meet all the requirements that we have from the fire department to meet that, that requirement. There'll also be some interactions with the city staff on what their requirements are, but we're completely supportive of utilizing those tanks. So I think that's something a lot of people have been looking for. So we're happy to announce that. One of the other items that seems to be a little bit confusing to some people, and I'm not sure why, but the question about utilizing pools with a draft hydrant has come up, at least inside conversations with some of the, the architects. And the fire department is completely supportive. If somebody wants to put in a pool and give us a draft hydrant, we will provide those details so that people can utilize that, and it gives the fire department an additional 20, 30, 40,000 gallons of water that we could use, just in case there's any failures in the existing system with District 29. So we're, we're happy to work with that and, and keep moving forward with other options. We've been working almost hand in hand with District 29 on a daily basis, trying to work through all the different options that they have at their discretion, and working with Director Pastrella on how we can move forward with making the systems better and more resilient. And I can't speak for them, but I know that we're working tirelessly to make the systems better as quickly as possible. One of the other things that we've been working with is, and it's a little off the topic, but from an access standpoint, the other main component the fire department looks at is fire department access. So we get our vehicles to the parcels where there may be an emergency, and we've been making individual site visits. I was up in Big Rock today, working with one of the architects to make sure that we're doing everything we can to make the access as best as we can, staying within some financial constraints for the homeowners, knowing that insurance doesn't cover changes to your gates and your driveways. So there's still a lot of work to be done, but we're still moving forward, trying to do the best we can, as fast as we can, to get everybody rebuilt. End of report.
And questions from council?
Yes, a quick question to the chief. By the way, great news. Thank you very much. I know one of the questions that's going to come up is, how big of a tank is the right tank?
So that's going to depend on the size of the home. We're going to utilize one of the tables in Appendix B of the Fire Code. So what we'll have to do is work with the architect, or design professional, or the homeowner, depending on how, how big they want to make their home, we can use from that table the size of that tank. But right now, it's going to be, there's three different sizes, 7,500, 10,000, and 12,500, are the three tank sizes. So they're not huge, but they're still going to have to comply with whatever else the city needs as requirements from them. But we're going to move forward with approving them as soon as they, they come to our direction.
Very good. And then the other question, I thought the drafting of pools was required back around the end of 2008 or so?
There, we did have a requirement in the Fire Code that, that gave the draft hydrant off the pools. We ran into some difficulties in other sections of the county, where it was becoming a more of a problem, especially in a built-up tract of homes, where there's absolutely excellent water service. We didn't need that, and it became more of a complication than it was solving problems. So, but there's still nothing that says you can't do it. We just weren't requiring it over the last two Fire Code cycles. But we're more than happy to move forward with any pool that anybody wants to put in and give us a draft hydrant. and give us a draft hydrant.
I know we've got one in my neighborhood, and it makes me feel better to know there's 25,000 gallons down at the end of the street.
Yeah, there's a lot of water in those pools.
Yeah, thank you.
And we would love to be able to use it.
Mayor Pro Tim Silverstein?
Chief, first of all, sorry for keeping you so long. I didn't appreciate that you were sitting there waiting to present this. We could have done this earlier, and I apologize for that.
It's fine.
And I echo Doug said, that is great news. I know that we have a lot of residents who are going to be happy to hear it. Is there any hitch? I mean, it could just be very defined rules as to what size people are going to know going in with their professionals, and they'll just be able to get this done?
Yes, it's very, the size of the tanks are directed at the number, the square footage of the home. So it should be pretty clear. There shouldn't be any controversy with it.
That's great. The pool issue, I may have misunderstood it. I thought the issue was not whether people could make the pool available to be used for fire suppression, but whether, in the absence of adequate fire flow, otherwise, not a tank, but whether they could use a pool as substitute. Did I misunderstand that that was something some people were looking for?
I hadn't had that elevated to me in lieu of a tank using the pool.
I thought that's what some people were asking, for a tank or a pool. Maybe I misunderstood, though.
I don't think I've heard that. We haven't really weighed in on that. I'll definitely look at that as a possibility.
Yeah, I think some people would like to know whether they could build, if there's inadequate fire flow, with a pool, as opposed to with a tank. The tank is a great addition. If the answer is no, you know, I'm not going to argue with half of it, but I think some people wanted to be able to use a pool.
No, and I completely understand that, but we hadn't gone down that road, but we can easily go down that road also and investigate that. I know one of the concerns is always, is there going to be water in the pool? And how do we regulate that? How do we monitor it? And how do we make sure that that component is being complied with?
So how do you do that with a tank?
Well, you can put a low-water alarm on the tank, and you can monitor it through that alarm process. I think with a pool, it'd be a little more difficult. I'm not sure if that's even a possibility, but we'll look into it.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions from?
Yeah, thank you so much again. I think it's helpful to have the clarity, and it's great news. Is there a type of tank that you'll be specifying? Metal, plastic, or is that something up to the city council?
I think we need to work out a lot of those details with the city staff, to make sure we're in compliance with what they want.
Gotcha. And will there be signage at the property, alerting fire people that there is water on the property?
So with that draft hydrant, that should be located either along the road or right at the base of the driveway, there's a sign that actually goes on that draft hydrant that indicates to us that it is a draft hydrant, and how many gallons of water are in that tank.
Is that something that the beacon boxes that you'll be updating, as far as?
I think we would want to put that information in there, because that would alert any of the out-of-area Fire Department personnel that are coming in, that they do have alternate water sources.
Perfect, thank you.
Steve?
You know, just thank you very much. It's really good news, and I'm sure a lot of people are going to be very thankful that you delivered it to them. So thank you.
Okay.
The only question I had, is this going to be for, including Woolsey also?
Well, our proposal right now is just for the Palisades. I think that would be something that if we need direction, further direction on that, then I would need to probably get it from city staff or city manager, if we want to use.
So I would like to see that for Woolsey also. I don't know, do we have?
I would like to see it for everyone. Yeah, I thought it was a general, across-the-board property.
On the last conversation from the community, there has been also petitions for the 1993 fire, so just to bring that to your awareness.
Say it one more time, I'm sorry.
Going back to the 93 fire?
I would support this for any disaster rebuild, but I would not be inclined to support it for new construction in general, because that's a more nuanced question.
I would, yeah, that would be my direction also, that it would be disaster-related, so that a home could be rebuilt that was destroyed by a disaster, but any new construction on a previously vacant lot would not be.
Right, and that's our proposal. And we'll put this in writing to a city manager, and so that we, it's real defined on what it is, but we initially, just for rebuilds, and we had only identified it as for Palisades. If the city council wants us to include it for other things, then we'll have to include that also.
Is that something we can do right now? Trevor?
I would just like to understand why it wouldn't be for new builds as well.
But we can't take action because it's not on the agenda, but I think everyone's expressed their opinion about that. So if the chief has any questions or needs to bring back items in the future, we can.
So can we have a discussion for Councilmember Conrad's question of why not including rebuilds, or new construction?
It's not on the agenda, so we shouldn't get into a long discussion about it. It's not on the agenda. But I believe the general justice that it would facilitate development.
So do we need to bring back an item for a future agenda item? Or, I mean, how is it that we're giving directions to the Fire Department? Do we need to have a formal? So do we need to bring this back as an agenda item, so we can have that formal discussion and give the formal direction to Fire Department?
I'd recommend that, that everyone can be clear, the direction to the chief. Does that work?
That works.
Yeah, that was the item we were supposed to have the last two meetings, I think. So let's have it, and let's give the formal direction. And we can discuss the question of whether it should extend to non-fire rebuilds as well.
Yes, Kelsey, your city manager, if we can make sure that's on the next possible agenda, so we can get that resolved. That'd be great.
And chief, I really appreciate your straightforwardness and the answers you've given. I mean, we have a lot of speakers to come, and they qualify everything, and you've been very straightforward and candid. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Just want to add, as far as timing, this is an item that needs to go to the Board of Supervisors also. So I just don't want to promise you that it's going to be on the next council agenda, knowing that.
Well, I think that we would like to have the discussion, so we can set the parameters of what our city council would like the direction to be.
Perfect.
So that would be good to have back as quickly as possible, understanding that, yes, it's ultimately going to be up to the county supervisors to accept the Fire Department's recommendation for that.
Okay, thank you.
But at least they'll have what we, as a city, would like to see it include.
Perfect, thank you.
Good. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Back to the city manager.
Thank you, Chief DiVali.
Thank you very much for your patience.
That concludes my report.
Okay.
Oh, wait, Sergeant.
Well, Sergeant Silverland's going to give us an update of all the activities over the last couple of weeks.
Good evening, I'll be quick. So PCH reopened on Friday at 8:00 AM. Still 25 miles an hour throughout the area. I'm sure you've probably seen numerous highway patrol officers in the area. So thank you for them, and they are helping us out tremendously with their presence there, slowing everybody down. There's still construction, heavy equipment in the area, so please be on the lookout for those hazards. Also, there's no stopping or parking on the shoulder on either side of PCH in that area. I've heard reports of people walking through burned properties out to the beach to enjoy the beach. So that's not the area to do it. Speaking of the beach, Memorial Day weekend, that's our kickoff for beach team, and I was out there yesterday and throughout the weekend. So there was decent weather, decent turnout, and decent behavior, so I'm happy to see that. I even saw Bruce there with his wife enjoying the beach the other day, so. As far as our deployment, we are still having high-visibility patrols throughout the area, especially in the burn zone. We are using drones nightly to patrol the area as a force multiplier, so our drone operators are out there. We also have our helicopter available every single weekend, and the funding is provided by the Board of Supervisors. So we are staffing that, and we're continuing. We're going to be out every weekend at the beach, and then starting July 1st, we will be seven days a week. And that is all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Question. I've often seen those solar-powered trailers that have cameras on them. Is that something that the sheriff's department utilizes, or are those just private property owners that usually put them in parking lots?
So the ones we have is a radar trailer, kind of feedback, speed feedback, that shows your speed. The ones I think you're referring to, those are private, for like, security cameras, things like that.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions?
Can we get the drones incorporated into our general overall protection plan?
Yes, now that the drone program is operational, it will be out.
I think that's great.
Yeah, we're the test station, right? Lost Hills is the test station for that?
We are the pilot station.
Pilot station. Any other questions? Okay, great.
Thank you for keeping us safe.
Thank you, good luck with everything. Glad the opening was as successful as it was. All right. Anything else? We'll move on to item 4A. Okay, there's not this many people left here, so how can there be so many speaker slips? Okay, so these are for items not on the agenda. So I have Merrill May, Lynn Dornhelm, are you still here? Lynn? Ann Kay, and Chris Sorensen, I don't see him either. Merrill?
I'm so glad that the chief was just here, because I was going to come up here and plead and beg again for water tanks. So we all know that's great news. 93, any fire damage, everybody should be able to use water tanks. I was just having a conversation with Jefferson the other day about water tanks and extra storage in the mountains and people's houses, then provides additional supply when there is a demand, that can help protect other people's houses also, because they're not going to be drawing on those systems. So it's, I think we should need to make it really obvious and easy for people to find this now, that you're making some headway on this. I mean, this is a game changer. In addition to that, since Woolsey, I don't know of any extra additional storage capacity that's been added. I know that we put in some new lines down at Encinal for, you know, when the new tanks go in, but that's a long time to not add water, when we had Woolsey and lost a lot of houses because we didn't have water. And now, after the Palisades fire, drew down the 3 million gallon tanks and had a 100 million gallon reservoir that was empty. So obviously, having reserves in the mountains is an important thing. So I don't know how we can get some more big tanks built, but it's obvious that we need it, because we can't supply a disaster when the fire's going on. I'm glad we had a cool weekend last weekend, so we weren't overwhelmed with the crowds that came, because the supervisor's been very helpful with Zuma, getting more restrooms, porta-potties, getting those restrooms open, getting more trashcans out, which I begged them to do, and they did a good job. They also got more gate attendants, because a couple of weeks before that, they didn't have, they had two gate attendants, and so traffic was backed up past Zumares. So that was all straightened out. Zuma underpass has to be on the list also, to try to get that opened. I mean, that's been a couple-year project now. I was speaking, I requested that the fire hydrants get cleared, so that, because in a fire, you would think that it's good to have access to the fire hydrants. So I've gotten some communication from somebody at the Fire Department, that they're going to work on that. Also, anybody that uses PCH, I think we should request that they try to watch their speeds, government vehicles, buses, all that kind of thing, because most people are being better about their speed. But if we can request official organizations that are traveling that road to go the speed limit or slower, might be helpful also. And I'm thrilled about the water tanks. So let people know about that, and how they can get that information and get in line, because that's great news. Thank you very much, thanks for everything else.
Thanks, Merrill. So Ann Kay, followed by Darren Graves, followed by Daniel Smith.
Hello. So first off, the LA Board of Supervisors adopted the draft hydrant and on-site water tank storage in 96, 1996. In 2006, I was here in the city interviewing the mayor of the company I'm still president of, we did a documentary, part of it, but, gosh, hell, but it was a draft hydrant. You can find that program, the very one that the LA County Fire Department uses right now to train their firefighters, on my site, which is, Mr. Stewart always wanted to know what this was, Councilmember Stewart, say rabbit dot com. So if you go to say rabbit dot com, you can find all the links to videos, all the projects we do. And if you send me a message, tomorrow, Herb's Burger is giving you buy one, get one free, only for tomorrow, so that's on the 28th. So send me a message, and I'll send you the link. They can use the business. The other one is the Caltrans study in Malibu. That's a pretty big deal here, about the road. Some of you were on that call. We have a copy of that. I know people have had, so they can't find a video copy. We have a copy. And the deadline for comment's been extended to June 16th, so put in your comments. The other thing, too, the Brown Act. I've been afforded an opportunity to address this, and I thank you very much, because you were responsive to my first request, which was Section 7, Item 7.C., which is interim city manager. Over the weekend, I sent another, which is a cure and correct letter. And I don't know how we're going to do, move forward with this, because we just discovered that you have a contract that's not signed yet, and that's items coming up next. And I don't know how it works, if it could be retroactive, that is beyond my pay grade. I do know that some journalists, not just myself, are asking if Mrs. Bond is legally able to execute a contract, such as one for security or any business before the city, before she signs the contract. And when we bring that item up, I will hold it up again, there is no contract. It's still signed contract. So what did she sign? Because we made a public workers request, and we never received any, no sign. We haven't seen anything. Always sees a, this is a part where you're, Mayor Riggins is supposed to sign and approve this. That's all we're going on. We can only go by the information you put out there for us. Fortunately, we saw this in the packet in back, and I'll bring it up here when we bring up that item. I find it impossible. So, thank you, maybe you can weigh in. You do want to know if the Covered Six contract is legal? Thank you.
Thank you. Darren Graves, followed by Daniel Smith, followed by Joe Drummond.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, esteemed council members, new city manager, welcome. Thank you for allowing me the time to bring a few things to your attention. We all know, as Sergeant Sullivan stated, that PCH was opened on Friday, and it went rather smoothly. There were, however, some incidents that led to confusion for me and some of my neighbors. Unbeknownst to many of you, known to some of my neighbors, Big Rock Beach neighbors have been going to the beach since March 27th to clean up fire debris, pull it out of the ocean, pull it up onto the bluff, so the ECC, RCI subcontractors for USACE can take it away. We were doing that on Friday for three hours, from 5 to, or from 4:45 to 7:45. And to do so, we had to park on my parents' property, basically as close to the fence as we could. Unfortunately, that property is smack dab in the middle of the burn zone. At around 6:00 PM, a city parking attendant came up and asked what we were doing, and explained what we were doing, and he took no issue with it. But at 7:15, two sheriff SUVs pulled up, asked what we were doing, and basically said, the policy from here on out is you cannot park here. So then that raises the question, how do homeowners protect their land? How can they access their land? Because that policy won't allow us to access our property. I was planning on camping out all weekend. I obviously couldn't. I haven't been there since, but I have driven by, coming to central Malibu and west Malibu, and I saw over 60 people parked in the burn zone, in order to get out of their cars, take pictures, trample on private property, and on the memories of, you know, homes which have burnt down. So while I understand their point of view, it still seems to be a problem. I want to know if I can go back and actually park on my parents' property. The second issue that I want to bring up, unfortunately, I've mentioned it last week, I think Andy Lyon expressed concern about a certain individual who has been causing problems and actually breaching private property rights since January 20th. Civil Statute 1708.8 specifically, since May 9th. That statute says that you cannot use a drone to illegally surveil private property without the owner's consent, if you are doing so in a malicious manner. This person has done it on May 9th, May 10th, and May 20th. He has used that footage and put it on Instagram in order to throw shade at Malibu and accuse Malibu of polluting and killing the ocean. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, because I know it's not the city's job to protect private property, but... but I think it is the city's job to protect the city. And he is attacking the city directly, so I just wanted you to be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Smith, followed by Joe Drummond, followed by Jefferson Wagner.
Hi, thank you. What a night. I'd like to officially ask the council to agendize further discussion on allowing reuse or grandfathering of all septic systems on the beach that are inspected and proven undamaged by the fires, regardless of capacity. This decision can be made irrespective of the sewer line discussion. In fact, it might simplify your decision-making on that front. The time is now. Percolation tests, wave up brush studies, system engineering, these are costs quickly tallying to the tens of thousands of dollars. They are due right now, and they're not necessary for the vast majority of burn area homeowners with perfectly acceptable tanks still standing. Rebuilds that aren't increasing bedroom count or fixture count should not need to supplement or replace their existing working undamaged tanks. Malibu's own website and published materials state that advanced OWTS systems are only required with development that increases the wastewater load to an existing OWTS, or for failing systems. Now, they're attempting to change the rules to take advantage of hundreds of fire victims who are already facing impossible odds toward rebuilding. It is shameful. If you permitted a one thousand gallon tank for use in December, that same one thousand gallon tank should be permissible for use now. Any other determination defies logic, common sense, and fairness. If you don't get this right, you will force three hundred some homeowners to pour new seawalls into the beach. Erosion will be exacerbated, the sand will be gone, and Malibu's iconic coast will become a shoreline of concrete. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Drummond, followed by Jefferson Wagner, followed by Scott Dietrich.
Hi, Joe. Hi. So, this last appeal is exactly why our fire rebuilds need to be reclassified as something called a rebuild, not new development, its own category. If you cannot do this as a council, then you have to declare a moratorium on any new development that's over ten percent from Woolsey, Broad, Franklin, Palisades Fire, and any other future, God forbid, fire. Tyler leaving at eight PM every night because of this lack of clarity on neighborhood character and not completing required studies to actually determine ESHA if it's being argued, even though obviously anything above eighteen feet that is discretionary and opposed should not ever be approved if there's opposition by multiple neighbors and existing residents. Re-residents of Big Rock have been trying to meet with Tyler to help prevent view blocking issues and improve our fire resiliency by codifying our CCNRs through an overlay district. He is being distracted by these large project appeals that are approved faster than the remaining Woolsey projects and our current rebuilds. Planning verification should only take a few days, but it's taking weeks, even though I'm grateful to be approved right now on the earlier side of things. We could have a domino effect of all of our neighborhood character changing dramatically by continuing to require needless studies, such as additional geotactical requirements beyond what is necessary for our foundations, mechanical, electrical plumbing, and anything beyond stating what we are rebuilding is as stable as before, even more stable. That's it. Apparently, you all have received a memo from the former city geologist stating that fire does not affect landslides and that no geo-studies should be required for flat pads in landslide areas. This would remove much added cost and time for we residents who wish to rebuild in less than two years. You have another appeal next month for a multi-story nine thousand square foot home with an entertainment sports complex, which looks perfect for an event center or rehab center, not a family home that sends our kids to our schools. I'm afraid of the outcome of that after tonight's nightmare decision. If we don't rebuild our homes lost in the fires quickly and trust that we will do this safely by using AI, self-certification, removing needless obstacles and studies, our city will be lost. Please focus your efforts on rebuilding what has been lost to prevent this. With a moratorium on new development, this will encourage empty lots to be purchased and rebuild them no larger than ten percent, thus maintaining our neighborhood character. If you cannot, as a council or city, get our city rebuilt completely in two to five years, then you must stop the distractions of new construction. You can, of course, complete remodels and small additions homeowners would like to make. But if you want to save this town, you need to stop discretionary new development that continues daily where architects and developers push the barriers and continue to change our neighborhood character and no longer protect natural environment. I mean, this is, I think, this is also happening in Marin County where they had a sewer system where they stopped development. I'll send an email more. Thank you.
Thank you. Jefferson, followed by Mike Moore and Norm Haney.
Good evening, council members. Thank you very much for your time and effort on behalf of your community. Just wanted to bring up a very quick moment. I know the fire chief is gone, but Merrill and I had come up with some discussions on the water tanks and how to hide them and how to put them into use. I have a water tank on my property, and I had about fifteen visitors from the carbon mason property homeowners that have visited the site to see the tank. And some of the particulars that are incorporated in the tank I have on my property, it's three sixteen stainless. It withstood the Woolsey fire.
Does anyone know? Is that your dog?
Withstood the Woolsey fire, even though the house did not. But the chloramines, there are a number of ways to do these tanks properly. It's up to the council to do that research. And if you need somebody that actually has one to come look at, or send people to come look at it, they're welcome to come see it. It works wonderfully. I have the proper attachments for the fire department to hook up. I have the proper signage out in front. And it really saves a lot of time and effort if somebody comes and visits these tanks, especially since they've already been installed and the way we engineer them and the way that they're built with gravity to help feed the water system, it's a gimme-gimme. I just hope you can find a way to hide them because they do shine if you use the proper materials. Cloaking them with ivy or some kind of lattice material that's three feet away from it is another way to do it so that they don't impose themselves on people's view shed or their homes. The wonderfulness of their home designer by their architects. Thank you very much. Come visit the tank.
Thank you. Mike, and you have an extra minute from Dina.
Just kind of doing this off the cuff, but I wanted to thank Tyler again for all their efforts in the LCPA amendments that were done earlier and everybody on staff and whoever worked with him on that. There's a lot of work yet to be done. I'm gonna start out with a fifty thousand foot view and then dive down. So, honestly, if it can be measured, it can be approved upon, right? So, we need some data points here. I'd like to ask anybody up there if they, they know how many homes were lost in Woolsey Fire. Anybody know? Four hundred and eighty-eight. How many homes were lost in the Franklin Fire? Anybody know?
Eleven, nine?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Anybody know how many homes were lost approximately in the Palisades Fire here in Malibu?
Seven fifty?
Pretty close. All right. So, I can use AI and ask and get this, you know, while I was sitting over here, get the numbers. So, how many homes were completed from Woolsey Fire?
One eighty-eight.
One ninety-eight, right now? So, if you take the total homes lost and the total homes completed, that's what your percentage is, correct? Right? Homes lost, homes completed. It's about forty-one percent for Woolsey. All right. Now, let's do, oh, here's another fact. We've lost-
How many are under construction?
Well, yeah, there, you know, we won't conflate numbers like that's-
But we get to count those.
We don't conflate numbers to get percentages, right? Completed homes. So, you know, unlike your site where you have to go in and find these numbers, they're not on a dashboard like, like- Army Corps of Engineers, right? Army Corps of Engineers, they have an immense job, right? And on their landing page for the LA Fire, they have basically four numbers. You have the numbers lost, you have those that have ROEs, those that are in progress, and those are completed. You have lost and completed, right? So, then you can track their progress of how they're doing, right? So, they have like thirteen thousand five hundred and seventy-nine homes, right? Four hundred and nine, or five thousand nine hundred and seventy-three homes complete, forty-four percent complete in six and a half months. They have a massive project to do, right? We've only done forty-one percent in over six and a half years for Woolsey. Now, you added, uh, I'm a Marine, so it's like they call us cramp eaters. So, I brought my trail of cramps here, so doing math in public. Twelve hundred and twenty-three homes total between Woolsey and Palisades, right? We've lost more homes in six and a half years than the previous twenty-four years that's Malibu as a city, right? So, now we gotta look at leadership. Who is in leadership in these past six and a half years? We gotta look at policy. So, now we gotta measure these data points, right? We've lost, oh, another fact, how many single-family homes are in Malibu? Does anybody know? Pretty close. Forty-three, forty approximately. So, we've lost about a third of our single-family homes in Malibu from fires in the past six and a half years, right? What's our rebuild rate? We're only rebuilding at a rate of thirty homes per year based on the one hundred and ninety-eight that are complete, right? Now, you add in how many homes we've lost in the past six and a half years. We've lost two hundred a year. We're losing two hundred a year for fires, right? And we're only completing thirty a year. LA Olympics are gonna be here in two and a half years, right? Everybody's gonna be watching. I know other press have come and talked to us, after the LA Times article came and talked to us. And you know what? This, this meeting today would be a perfect example for me to show them of why it's taken so long to rebuild in Malibu. This is a perfect example. Neighborhood character, I'll touch on that, needs to be fire-hardened homes. That's basically it.
Thank you. Norm?
Good evening, city council members. I really appreciate the fire captain's comments with regard to the water tank. If your house burned down, you can rebuild with a water tank. But there are areas that are not provided with sufficient water from municipal sources. But if your house didn't burn down, then you can't use a water tank. That doesn't make any sense to me. If, if the water system does not provide sufficient flow that the fire department requires, and you have a house, why can't you add a water tank and supplement that water flow? You can only supplement it if the house burns down, then you can have a water tank. Doesn't make any sense to me. I think they missed an entire category. Then there are areas in Encinal Canyon where you have vacant lots. They're served by municipal water. However, the water system is not gonna work because they're not going to, they're gonna tear down the existing water tank and rebuild a new one someday, sometime in the future. It was supposed to be three years back. Now, we don't know when it's gonna be because, quite frankly, the county is broke. And if you apply for a house in an area that's not served by municipal water, they will let you build a house with a water tank, absolutely. They do it all the time. But if your house is served by a municipal water tank, whether it provides sufficient flow or not, they won't give you a water tank to build your house. Why? Because they want to extort money from you to put in a system which is large enough to provide the water service that you deserve. I know I used a tough term. We can change it to extraction, but they do it all the time. And everybody knows it, but nobody does anything about it. So, what are we gonna do about those houses that are already existing, but the water service from the municipal water source is insufficient and the fire department won't let them have a tank to save their house? Think about these things. Something going on that's wrong. Thank you.
Okay, last call, Scott Dietrich, Lynn, and Chris Sorensen. One, two, three, no. Do we have any speakers online?
Two hands. Kevin Keegan?
Okay, no more additional hands. Kevin?
Excuse me, yes. Good evening. I want, I want to share the news tonight with Malibu residents and neighbors of the very real possibility that we will have a water ferry service in Santa Monica Bay by Labor Day, led by Patricia Keeney-Masash and the local coalition. The proposed peer-to-peer ferry is for residents, commuters, workers, tourists, and businesses, and it is led by a private joint venture. We expect to know more by the next city council regular meeting or shortly thereafter in mid-June. For now, what I can share is the catamaran boats can carry one hundred passengers. The global vessel operator is licensed in California. We expect service from Malibu to Santa Monica to Marina Del Rey. We are talking with shuttle bus companies, and a ridership survey will help determine the boat schedule. Goals of the water ferry service include safety, emergency evacuation service, travel time, potential traffic reduction on PCH, and more. While the launch of the water ferry service this summer is private sector-led, the intent is for a public-private initiative with longer-term goals to meet emergency evacuation, public transportation needs, and to prepare our region for international events like the World Cup and LA twenty-twenty-eight. Lastly, I'm happy to share with you tonight that there is a significant amount of coordination between public and private partners at the state, county, and city levels, as well as with pier operators, state parks, harbors and beaches, environmental stakeholders, engineers, and more. Again, we hope to know more by June ninth or shortly thereafter, and a potential Labor Day launch of the water ferry service is the goal. Malibu, we can do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Ryan.
Ryan, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I wanted to encourage the city to seek a grants rider position or engage the grants rider or assign work for the grants rider as, grants rider as the goals. And if you don't have any goals, you need to have a special meeting because I can think of ten of them right off the top of my head. And we need, especially for transportation, we need for possible economic recovery grant where we could have a shuttle bus take in the morning residents possibly through the Burnscar area, as I said, under police escort if necessary to save time. And that they could return with tourists that are picked up at the various Santa Monica hotels, bring them to Malibu for shopping on Cross Creek or for lunch or brunch, and so forth. That could be a state grant or could be an MTA grant, or, you know, we could tap into monies that we're already paying for. The other is that we're concentrating sheriff response, that if you read this contract that you're approving, it is that the covered six is supposed to observe and report. If they see something, they're supposed to call the sheriff, and the sheriff come and does, you know, the response and arrest if, if they can show up in time. So, that means western Malibu is pretty much under-covered at this point. And so, the remaining thing is that you might file for a community policing or what's otherwise known as a brutality grant for extra patrols for western Malibu to compensate for the concentration of our existing sheriff resources towards eastern Malibu. And those patrols could be by, well, I would say by Malibu Patrol or Gates Patrol. Just to be fair there, it actually should be competitively bid. So, those are important ones to consider, traffic safety grants and so forth. For, you know, a public safety department will have to track and submit reports for compliance with the funding that comes with those grants. And prior to establishing public safety as its own department and then hiring a person, additional staff to do what Susan Doye- an additional staff to do what Susan Doiness was originally hired to do, we now have the resources to do that. So we don't need to shy away from applying for these extra grants, and I encourage you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so since it is after ten-thirty, do we want to have item four B? Can I get a motion?
If I could suggest, we've got some staff members here, maybe we gotta plow through whatever they're here for.
Yeah.
Okay, so bypass that and go to item five A? So can, do I have a motion to hear item five A?
I'll make a motion to approve item five A.
Not approved. Hear it.
I mean, here, I'm sorry.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just one quick, one thing I would like to the City Council. The National Guard pulled out over the weekend.
Yes.
And they did a hell of a job. The places immaculate, they cleaned it up. I talked to the city managers in a conversation. She recommended we should send something to them, but thank them for what they did. I mean, so if I can get a consensus from the council, we draft a letter and get it over to them.
I think that's an excellent idea, and I think it should be one of many for all the outside help that we got, so.
Okay.
I would say yes. Do we have a consensus?
Yes.
That's to bring an item on the future agenda to approve the letter.
I really wanted to do that, right?
Okay, so back to five A. Do we have a second to hear item five A?
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Could we also just figure out which items we should, we can do tonight and which ones don't have to be done?
I think Kelsey has a list if the council's interested.
There's really, there's only one, two, three, four items for us to plow through. Five C and five D are recommended to move to a future meeting. Six A, I mean, so there's the, the fee waiver and then the confirmation of the appointment of Ambassador Bond as our city manager. So I think, and these two, next two, I think we can get through really quick. So, so is that all in favor for item five A to be heard? Yes?
Yes.
Go ahead, please, Director Bundy.
Yes, good evening, council, and it's gonna be quick. This is an item that is brought to you every year. This is in regard to the Malibu Garbage disposal district. Next slide. It was established in nineteen forty-nine. The district is in, within the area of the city where the waste management services are administered by the county, and they provide services through universal waste system for residential and businesses. Next slide. So this evening, we are conducting a public hearing to adopt the resolution authorizing the collection on the country, county tax roll of the fee for the cost of the implementation for the services. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, any questions for staff? Any public comment?
No, we don't have any speaker slips or raised hands for this item.
Okay, we'll close public comment. Any, do we have a motion?
Open the public hearing and close the public hearing.
Close the public, open the public hearing and close the public hearing. Thank you. Any discussion from the council?
Move to approve this item.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, can I have a motion to hear item five B?
Move to hear item five B.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Staff report?
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Richard Rojas, interim deputy city manager. I'll provide the brief presentation for your consideration this evening. Next slide, please. The report before you is a statutory requirement to report on vacancies in compliance with Assembly Bill twenty-five sixty-one. This is a bill that became a law in twenty-twenty-four and was done to ensure that local government agencies were prioritizing the completion of recruitments to avoid some of the negative consequences associated with overburdening agencies. Next slide. There are three main requirements that we're trying to meet with the report this evening. One is to hold a report once a fiscal year to make a formal report on vacancies as well as their recruitment and retention efforts. Two, to hire, identify hiring obstacles and needed policy or procedural changes during the hearing. And then three, allow the recognized employee organization to present at the hearing. Since number three does not apply, this is not something that we'll be addressing during the presentation. Next slide. Here are some of the positions that were, that are new to the organization that were included in this current fiscal year's budget. As you can see, they have all been filled in a timely manner, and we are utilizing these new staff's abilities and contributions on a weekly basis. Next slide. This slide here summarizes the current active recruitments. As you can see, there are twenty full-time and two part-time positions. They cover a range of positions from supervisory level to more counter and technical staff, professional staff responsibilities. These are all, as I stated before, currently going through recruitments. The details of those recruitments are available as an attachment to the staff report. Next slide. We do not have any current changes to policies or procedures to report, as we are finding that we do not have any obstacles to address in the hiring process. Next slide. We did, however, want to touch on some of the noteworthy changes that have occurred in the past couple of years to enhance the recruitment process. They include the use of social media and job fairs to attract candidates, use of government jobs, which enables the easy completion and submission of application forms to our HR department, updated job descriptions, improved salary adjustments to make the positions that are available more attractive, improved benefits, flexible work schedules, including nine-eighty and telecommuting options, technology upgrades, HR consulting support, and increased focus on employee engagement and wellness activities. This concludes staff's presentation, and we recommend we open the public hearing and receive and file the report.
Okay, any initial questions for staff?
Just a quick question. Which ones of these open positions we have with outside recruiters are we using? I know city manager we are and...
That's a good question. Off the top of my head, we, we have utilized recruiters for certain portions of some of these positions, including the community development director. We utilized a recruiter to help with the solicitation, well, essentially with the job announcement, the solicitation of applications. But now that we have initiated the screening, that is being conducted by staff. So it kind of varies depending on the, the position and the budget that we've allocated.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, real quick one. The twenty open positions, how many of them are filled by temporary people? How many are really, there's nobody there, you know?
That's a great question. I don't have that figure off the top of my head.
Okay.
But we could report back on that.
Cool.
Do we have any public speakers?
No, we don't. Oh, I'm sorry, we have one raised hand for this item.
Okay.
Ryan.
If you wanna open the public hearing.
We'll open the public hearing. Ryan, go ahead.
Yes, I wanted to comment on the proposed four-day work week that was mentioned here. My history with the city goes back so long that I can, I see how it worked before and after, and it really doesn't work for our city for the four-day work week every other week for employees. We are too small, and when people don't show up for work, it, it really cuts down the processing or it increases the processing time that it takes to get things done. You can't have any quick conference with somebody, and it, it just doesn't work. I know that's gonna be a bummer for some of the people who enjoy the four-day work week scenario, but it's not effective governance here in Malibu, and I would like the City Council to study that very carefully before any perpetuation of that plan or hiring under that scheme occurs. It may be an initial attraction if somebody has something better to do every other Friday, but it, it, it cuts us off as a city from getting work done when our other people, our departments aren't big enough. So that if somebody has a question or needs to interface on an item, like public works and planning on how to issue a permit or not issue a permit for some party going on at a crazy restaurant on the beach, for instance, these have to be done in a timely manner, or you run out of time and you end up getting sued by the restaurant. So that's just an example. Thank you.
Thank you. That'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments from council? Do we have a motion?
I think that was a very clear report. I appreciate it, and I move that we receive and file this.
Just a receiv- and file?
Yep.
Okay, great. Let's receive and file.
Just confirm we closed the public hearing.
Yes, I did. I even said the words, Chapper. Okay, so we're all good with five B?
Just to clarify, was that a motion for Mayor Protim Silverstein or Mayor Riggins? Were you receiving and filing on behalf of the council?
I, I need clear direction. Is this just a receiv- and file, or do you need a motion and a second?
It is a receiv- and file. It can be done by the mayor without objection, or it can be done by motion.
Okay, not hearing any objection, we'll receive and file. Good? Good. Okay. So we are on to, um, do we wanna skip six A?
Yes.
Yeah, we're waiting for Roy to give us some input.
Mayor, just to clarify, we still don't have direction on what the council would like to consider on June fifth if we're going to hold a work session. So if there's interest from the council, we would need that direction tonight.
So, okay, I guess we should hear item, do we have a motion to hear six A so we can give you direction on whether or not to?
Yeah.
Okay, so do we have a motion to hear item seven A? I'll make a motion to hear item seven A. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Kristen, can you give us a quick staff report?
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. The item before you is a six thousand, six hundred and ninety-two-dollar fee waiver request from the Malibu Arts Association for facility use at Legacy Park and fees associated with the permitting process. Since twenty-twenty-one, the Arts Association has coordinated over sixteen art shows at the park. The shows provide cultural enrichment experiences while supporting community artists. The Arts Association is a small organization with limited financial resources, and the organization works with the Malibu Public Library to provide art books as well as providing a scholarship for a Malibu high school graduating senior. The staff report includes the organization's financial documentation and community benefit. So this concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, do we have any initial questions from the council? We'll open the, go ahead.
So I'm just, so I'm clear. The Malibu Arts Association, who is that?
They're a nonprofit organization. They've been in Malibu for several years. They promote, there is a small fee to join that association, and they just promote local artists and provide opportunities for them to showcase their work or sell art.
Cool. And they're proposing to do art shows in Legacy Park?
That is correct.
Good. They've been doing it. Oh, okay, memo to me. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any public comment?
No, we don't have any speaker slips or raised hands for this item.
Okay, that'll open and close public comment back up to the council.
Move to approve seven A.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Item passes. So we are on to...
Move to hear seven B.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, can I give a brief staff report?
Yes. Do we need a staff report?
I'd like to give a brief staff report.
Okay, let's have a brief staff report.
Council members, before you today is an item confirming your previous appointment of Ambassador Candace Bond as the city's interim city manager and approval of her employment agreement. Her appointment and employment agreement were previously approved on May twelfth, twenty-twenty-five. Due to technical difficulties, the meeting and remaining items on the agenda were continued to the May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five adjourned regular meeting of the City Council. Due to the extraordinary circumstances caused by technical issues with the city's AV equipment, the City Council directed staff to bring back an item to confirm the appointment of Ambassador Bond as our interim city manager and approval of her employment agreement. Ambassador Bond has been a resident of Malibu for over thirty years and brings a long and distinguished history of public service and advocacy. The graduate of Harvard College and with honors and a recipient of an MBA from Harvard Business School, she has made a home and raised her family here in Malibu. She has served locally on the Board of the Los Angeles County Office of Education and is the co-chair of the MLK Community Development Corporation. Most recently, she has served as United States Ambassador to Trinidad and Tobago, where she received the country's highest civilian honor. She has important connections across local, state, and federal authorities, which she has already put to use advocating for the city, and which result in the CHP presence many of you saw across the burn areas this past weekend when PCH was reopened. Staff recommends that the City Council confirm her appointment and the approval of her employment agreement and welcome her as our interim city manager.
Thank you. Do we have any initial questions from the council? Okay, we're gonna open the public hearing. We have Ann Kay.
I think I'm the only one speaking. This is item seven B under new business. New means new, not old, revisited. It means this is new business. And generally, new business items on the, on the City Council's agenda is not retroactive. So that means if you do confirm her, you're doing this as of today. So anything that's happened prior doesn't exist. Once again, this is new business. You don't have to take my word for it. Malibu times, I mean, it, this is, you know, they said you guys had technical issues, but you did manage to push through one item, and I am thankful that you did, because I felt the meeting was conducted legally, because there is no protection in the Brown Act for people participating on YouTube or Zoom. That's always tip. So tough luck if you weren't here in person. If the action was taken here and people could hear it, then it's legal. But here we are, we have the opportunity to speak. I'm, I'm gonna add, I'm gonna be careful, because I don't have that much time. Ms. Bond's salary is three hundred thousand dollars. She's got six hundred and twenty-five dollars a month for her car, full medical, and, you know, insurance, four hundred thousand dollars in life insurance. If this is interim city manager, I don't know how this works, and a perfect skull on and like. What I'm also gonna show again is this, so everybody can see it. This is not a signed agreement. This, she has not been the city manager. Today, you will vote her in as city manager, but any business that was done prior to this date, I'm not quite sure. Matter of fact, it's got some of us really stumped. I'm not the only one who's reporting the story at this point. It's unfortunate that one reporter happens to be on vacation for the month. So I just wanna make it extremely clear that I haven't even had one. We will today. I guess, obviously, I'm gonna accept the decision of the City Council because they did bring it forward, and I wanna thank all the council members that allowed this moment to happen and to do it the correct way. And everybody at home, just a quick reminder, if you want to be heard, you have to be here physically. Otherwise, Ms. Conrad is correct, the Brown Act needs to be tweaked a little. And basically, it's to help everybody in technology. Thank you. Congratulations, Bond.
Okay, do we have any speakers online?
No, we don't have any raised hands.
That will close the public hearing. Any comments from council?
So first of all, Candace has done a great job for the very short period of time that she's had to come into this position and hit the ground running. Been very impressed with everything she's been doing so far. I'd like to propose that we change the word confirm in the recommended action to ratify, and the reason I say that is in law, there's a concept of ratification, which means that when an act was voidable as opposed to void ab initio, for those legal geeks out there following this, if something can't be done, it's void ab initio, but clearly, we had the power to appoint Candace as our interim city manager, where you... Where you do something that you have the power to do, but you do it defectively, which I don't believe we did, you have the ability to ratify it. And when you ratify it, it does apply retroactively. It's effective as of the date of the original action. So I believe our original action was valid and proper. But if we ratify this tonight, it will remove any arguable defect and make it applicable, make it effective the original date of the action. An appointment agreement can be oral. We voted clearly to employ Candace as our interim city manager. So if there is no signature from the mayor, that's irrelevant. That's just a procedural technicality, and that would also be cured by ratification. And I don't know of reporters who are arguing that this has not been done properly. The one that was referenced as being on vacation is not a reporter, is a blogger.
Anyone else? Do we have a motion to?
To ratify.
Ratify? Do we need to do anything to make that change in the language?
That's fine. The motion is to staff's recommendation, but change the term to ratify rather than confirm. Correct?
Yes.
That's a motion?
I'll second.
Who made the motion? I'm sorry.
I did.
Okay. So Bruce and then Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None? Okay, so do we want to? Do we want to have council comments? Okay, do we want to talk about item 6A? We do have a public speaker on it.
I think we let 6A die on the vine.
So that being, does that mean it will automatically cancel June 5th's?
Yes, without direction from the council on what item to schedule for June 5th, we would be canceling that meeting.
There will be no agenda.
There will be no agenda. So the meeting was never properly called. And of course, the staff will continue to schedule special meetings as needed with the council if other issues arise.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn? I'll make a motion to adjourn. I'll adjourn. Good. We are adjourned. We got through another meeting. Yay.
If anyone is missing their keys, I do have them up here at my desk. If anyone lost them in the bathroom.